Does it appear we ever had audio?
If you could stand by for a moment, I'm trying to figure that out. Give me one minute. All right, folks, sorry about that. We have audio now. It appears we did not when we began, and I apologize. If you'd like to begin again, we can certainly do that.
I think that would be appropriate. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Westminster Study Session for June 21st. We apologize, we've had a little bit of audio trouble on our live feed, but we appreciate you joining us now and sticking with us as we solve it. We've already taken the roll call. All members are present except for Counselor Bowles, who will be joining us later this evening. The first item on our agenda tonight is the report from the mayor. I do believe many of us are aware that there has been a tragedy in Arvada. A police officer was shot and killed and fell in the line of duty, paying the ultimate sacrifice to keep the community safe. I did ask our police chief, Tim Carlson, if he had any additional comments or information to add, and he does not at this time, other than to let the community know that our police department has offered any resources or assistance that Arvada may need at this time. And we are ready and willing, when they let us know, they need that. So I would ask at this time, on behalf of our police department and the entire city council, that we take a moment of silence in memory of this officer. Thank you, and I ask that you join in sending positive thoughts to this officer's family, the police department in general, and the community at large for such a tragic loss. Next, I'd like to go over a few items and events that I attended last week. First, I would like to go over the different meetings I attended on behalf of Westminster, and then also on behalf of some of the regional groups I belong to. On Wednesday, I did have Denver Regional Council of Government meeting. During that meeting, we did approve the tip amendments. There were two projects in Westminster that were included in that, so that's wonderful for the city. We also went through legislation, how the legislative session ended. There were quite a few bills that impact both transportation and aging, and trying to understand the impacts on those and opportunities for us to participate. In regards to the Front Range Rail Districts, I did want to find out how those that will sit on the taxing district will be nominated, and it appears it'll be through the Dr. Cog nominating committee. This is for the four seats that are within the MPO's boundary. So as soon as we hear more, they are getting guidance on that. I will let you know in case anyone is interested in participating in that manner. Additionally, we had the North Area Transit Alliance Strategic Planning Commission meeting, where we set the agenda for this following meeting. Then I wanted to let everyone know I was invited to attend the governor's bill signing, Transportation Bill 260, which is now state law. This is a decades-in-the-making statewide transportation fix. I was there on behalf of Colorado Communities for Climate Action, Metro Mayor's Caucus, and as a CML policy chair. A lot of people in Westminster over the years have worked on a statewide transportation issue. This year, we did take a neutral position on this specific bill, but it will have a real and tangible benefit for our residents and for our transportation and transit systems. So I look forward to continuing to advocate for Westminster to be at the table as we divide these funds up. And then finally, I wanted to mention that, well, not finally, today I wanted to mention is Child Tax Credit Awareness Day. So as part of the ARPA, everyone, well, not everyone, but most people with families are going to be receiving an additional child tax credit. So all working families will get a full credit if they make up to $150,000 for a couple. And the tax credit is 200, or I'm sorry, is $3,000 per child for children six to 17 years old and $3,600 for children under six. So it's been expanded. That affects roughly 39 million households, which covers 65 million children. That's nearly 90% of the children in the United States. And starting on July 15th, through the rest of the calendar year, payments will be made monthly via direct deposit for 80% of the families and through the mail for others. So that goes between $250 to $300 per child, depending on their ages. And so if you want more information on this, you can go to childtaxcredit.gov. And the last item I wanted to bring up is I had the opportunity last week to celebrate Westminster receiving the Envision Verified Project Bronze Award from the Institute of Sustainable Infrastructure for Westminster's new dewatering facility at the Big Dry Creek Wastewater Treatment Plant. Senior Engineer Kent Brugler gave a tour of the plant, and it was incredibly impressive. This is a very long project in the making. When I was very first on council, we were getting the staff recommendations to go forward. And so dewatering allows us to take the solid waste from our wastewater treatment and be much more efficient in how we transport it to the farm that the city owns and some farms that we lease. This is a very good way to dispose of this waste. And by doing the dewatering, we go from having over 24 trips per day, I believe it was, to seven. So really saving quite a bit on the transit each direction. Westminster was a little bit of a laggard in this department, slower than the surrounding communities at having a dewatering facility, but our design is so impressive now. It's a vertical dewatering facility that really saves money, has less points of failure, and is something to be proud of, and really efficient, stretching that ratepayer dollar much further. Senior Engineer Kent Brugler did such a great job describing the process, the benefits to the city and the benefits to the ratepayers. I would recommend anyone who's kind of curious about how these operations work, contact our Public Works Department and sign up for a tour. It's one of those city functions that we don't think a lot about, but it's so important that we get it right and that we have people who are constantly looking to save our ratepayers' money and improve the way we do business. So it was exciting to see an outside organization recognize the hard work that went into that. Those are my comments for tonight. I appreciate everybody's time. And again, thank you for bearing with us as we had some technical challenges earlier. The next item on the agenda is reports from city councilors. Are there any of my colleagues that have a report? It appears that we have Counselor, or I'm sorry, Mayor Protam Demont is in the queue first.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for all that information that you shared with us. I actually just wanted, as a follow-up on the tax information, because I think that's exciting for folks. I did talk to a tax professional, and they just recommend for sure that you check with your tax professional on that, because there is an opt-out that you can do next month. I know, like me specifically, I like to spread it out and get as much as I can per check, so I really bank on those tax credits at the end of the year. And so if you're not keeping in mind of that, it could really bite you next tax season. So I would just recommend that you make sure that you're checking with whoever does your taxes to be sure that you allocate that appropriately.
Thank you. Good tip. Any other comments, Mayor Protam? Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to, first of all, send my prayers and thoughts to the City of Arvada and their police department. It's just a tragic event, and it never sits well with any of us, but especially when it's so close to home. Also, I wanted to comment that on Saturday, I had the great opportunity to go out and do some bird watching at Stanley Lake. It was great fun, thanks to Mike. He does a great job. We met at 7:00 a.m. out at the lake with binoculars, and he identified over 20 different kinds of birds for us. I think there were actually 30, but I was being safe with 20. This group meets every first and third Saturdays all year long. And he talks about all the different birds that migrate and come into our city and then leave our city, and those that stay, and it was just really, really interesting. So I'll be joining that group again soon. Just really enjoyed that. So, and then finally, the Rocky Mountain Metro Airport had a public comment today on their strategic business plan. That was at 5:00 tonight. It was virtual. And I did take a few minutes, I took an hour to sit down and listen to that. Very nice comments, very thought-out comments by our public. And I appreciated their time and sharing their voice. That's it. Thank you.
So much, Counselor Scully. And are there any other reports of city councilors? Before we go move over to the city manager's report, I apologize to my colleagues. I also attended the Colorado Municipal League's Business Meeting today, where we did have an election. And I just want to let you know who won. I wanted to say thank you to everybody who responded and helped me with the votes. For the small category, Russell Stewart, the Cherry Hills Village Mayor, won. A.J. Euclid, the Deacono City Manager, won, and Susan Jung, the Rocky Ford Mayor, won. For the, sorry, going through, I had to take screenshots. For the medium category, Barbara Bynum of Montrose, who was a council member, won. Liz Hensley, an Alamosa council member, won. Melissa Youssef, a Durango council member, won, and Laura Weinberg, the Golden Mayor, won. She received the one-year term. And for the large category, Dale Hall, the Greeley Mayor, Pro Tem, won. Greg Catan, the Grand Junction City Manager, won, and John Marriott, the Arvada City Counselor, won. And for the largest category, there was only one candidate and only one slot, which was Angela Lawson from Aurora. So thank you for everyone for letting me know your choices, and I honored them in the voting process. And this is how it all shook out. Got some, didn't get some. All right. The next item before us is the city manager's report, a follow-up on the water sewer rate discussion. City Manager Trip. Oh, and for the record, Counselor Bowles has joined us. Counselor Bowles, anything to report? Okay.
Thank you, Mayor Sites. Mayor Protam and the members of council. This evening, I've requested to have some time on your agenda to have a discussion, if you choose, related to next steps on water and sewer rate setting for 2022. For those that may be joining the meeting and don't have background, the city is in the midst of a multi-year capital improvement program to rebuild infrastructure in water and sewer. And the council is in the midst of setting rates for the 2022 season to support that endeavor. Last week, we had a rate proposal for the council for 2022 that was not supported. And the council had a conversation about that. There were some great ideas brought forward, and the staff is studying those ideas, specifically looking at how to do something different with our tier system, which is a system that has a different rate depending upon the amount of water that you use. Tonight, Mayor Protam and council, we'd just like to have a conversation with you to understand further, you know, what sorts of changes you might suggest and what ideas you have about how to change the tiered system. We presented you with some alternatives. I'm going to bring Max Kirschbaum up. Anytime Max wants to join, and Larry Dorr to screen on also. And Max will put up on the screen the questions that we proposed talking about this evening. But before we do that, Mayor, I think it's fair to ask the council as a whole to make sure you're comfortable having this discussion tonight. You know, it is my opportunity on the agenda to bring these matters forward. I did so as quickly as we could following last week, because I'm required under the charter to recommend a budget to the mayor and council by September 15th. And a big part of that budget for 2022 is the budget for water and sewer. And the budget for water and sewer is informed to large degree by the rates that we charge and the revenue that we generate. So a budget team that needs to crank out those recommendations this summer needs as much time as possible to understand the wish of the council so we can get the council to a position of agreement on this important matter. But Mayor, I just, maybe you would like to poll or check in with your colleagues to see whether you'd like to have this conversation tonight, or you'd prefer that I defer to a week.
Thank you, City Manager Trip. I think I'll just poll very quickly. I'm going to go in the order that I see. So to the right of me, that would be Counselor Patrick Scully. Are you comfortable having this conversation tonight?
I am. Yes, ma'am.
Mayor Protam Demont.
Yeah.
Counselor Seymour.
Yes.
Counselor Smith.
Yes, Mayor, but I'd also like City Attorney Mr. Frankel to hop on and explain for transparency my question on why we can, because this wasn't on the agenda when it came out on Wednesday, so I just wanted to have that explained to the public.
City Attorney Frankel, are you available?
Yes, Mayor. I'm glad to respond. So tonight's study session is an open meeting, and the item that is proposed for a discussion would be to inform staff as they prepare a revised rate recommendation and as they prepare a budget for the utility. So there would not be formal action taken tonight. Rather, the budget presentation, which comes onto a regular city council agenda later in the summer, and the rate recommendation would also come onto a formal agenda for consideration. So I believe that if the council chooses to have the conversation tonight, to provide some feedback to staff, so that staff can initiate their work on the revision to the rate recommendation, I think that you can have that conversation if you'd like to.
Thank you so much, Mr. Frankel. Counselor Smith, does this help answer your question? Do you feel?
Yes, Mayor.
Okay, and to for clarity, you are comfortable with the conversation, correct?
Yes, Mayor.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bowles. You're comfortable as well. I thought I had not. Okay. So you have the council's consent to have the conversation. Let's dig in.
Mayor, thank you, and members of council, thank you. We'll spend as much of our little time on this this evening. Any information we have will help the staff moving forward. I want to ask Max to pull up the slide that relates to this issue, and when Max does that, and allow Max to make any opening comments he'd like to make. And then this is really your time to have discussion. I'll step back and let the experts kind of walk us through this and answer your questions. They're prepared to provide whatever answers they can. Tonight, I want you to understand that we're going to give you some viewpoints and professional opinion, because many of the answers that you'll ask questions on this evening will not be, you know, they won't be exact to the point of giving you the kind of exact for detailed data you might want when you make the vote. But right now, to have you have an order of magnitude as to how the variability impacts people's water costs, water and sewer costs, we think will be helpful. So, you know, the staff has done literally years of work on this. It's great work. We were very comfortable as a staff with the recommendation last week. But we also understand this has got to be accepted by you and by the community, and we're prepared to try to bring an alternative that meets feasibility, viability, and desirability of our community. So, Max, go ahead, please.
If I could have the next slide, please? Mr. Trip already covered the first two bullets on this slide. You can go back one slide, please? So I'll just mention with the third bullet that the reason we would like to have this discussion with you this evening is to see if there is a consensus on a particular change you might like to see on the tiered structure for residential water rates, because having that information is really a prerequisite for us to properly analyze the rate-revenue alternatives that we will come back to you with in lieu of the recommendation that we made last week. It's hard to go any further until we understand how it might affect each of the classes or tiers. Next slide, please? So we've put together a few items for your consideration here. There are probably others that might be on your mind. We'd like to hear that, too. But I'll briefly explain each of these, and any discussion or questions that you have is great. So first, would you like to expand Tier 2? Right now, Tier 2 is between 6,000 and 20,000 gallons on a monthly basis. One option could be to expand that Tier 2 as far as 30,000 gallons. That would add an additional 10,000 gallons. In each of these options, you'll notice that I have a part A and a part B. And the part A in each case is, if the revenue remains constant, what is the impact? In this case, some Tier 2 and Tier 3 customers would see some benefit, but a much greater number of Tier 1 and/or but a much greater number of Tier One and/or Tier Two customers would have higher bills. If it would be your intent that there should be a revenue reduction, the infrastructure investment level will be reduced. And that's really the part B of each of these options. That if they are not a revenue-neutral alternative, there would be a reduction in infrastructure investment. A second option would be, do you just want to eliminate Tier Three? If so, some current Tier Three customers will obviously benefit. But all Tier One and/or Tier Two customers would, as a result, have higher bills. Item Three, and here again, this is the discussion about adding a fourth tier. There would be more than one way to add a fourth tier. I represented one of them here. And that would be that there would be a fourth tier above the current Tier Three. In such case, current Tier Three customers, some of them will see a benefit, but still others within that same tier would have even higher bills if we established a fourth tier at a higher volumetric level. And in the fourth option, would you prefer to eliminate all tiers? And the tiered rate structure has been in place since the mid-1970s, and instead have a single flat rate? If so, at least three-quarters of our customers would end up with higher bills than they have currently. And that's based on essentially a projection, as we've shared with you in the workshops, that about 25% of our customers are considered lower-volume users. 50% make up that middle range of users. And there are 20%, 25% of our customers are what we would call a high-volume water user. So, those are the four options that we have put together for discussion or consideration. Any questions or comments you may have? But it would be helpful if we could move forward from tonight with some sort of consensus so that we can put it into the models.
I see that Counselor Scully has a question. Before we go on to that, I would imagine that there is the fifth option, which is to just leave the tiered system the way it's structured currently, like the differences between tiers, and then have potentially either whatever the council decides is a rate increase that they're comfortable with or a flat rate. Is that correct?
Yes. The status quo option.
As far as the tiers go, okay. Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Max, or I'm sorry, Mr. Kirschbaum, I'm trying to understand. You said that if we did number one, which kind of seems the most attractive to me, you said that some of Tier One and Tier Two customers would have higher bills. And I'm having a hard time figuring that out of my head because Tier One is 0 to 6,000, so their rate and their usage wouldn't change. So, they'd pay the same, is my thinking. And then, if we, in Tier Two, if we moved it from 6,000 to 30,000, it seems like we would pull more people into that tier and they would pay a little less. Am I not, I feel like I'm missing a piece here somewhere.
The other part of that is the beginning of that. If revenue remains constant, in other words, if this is a revenue-neutral proposition, then if you are lowering bill, if you are lowering rates for some, there has to be an offset somewhere within the remaining customer base to keep that a revenue-neutral option.
So, you're saying we would have to raise the rates in Tier Two? Is that what you're saying?
That's not, that's not what I'm saying. That would be, that would be an impact.
Okay, thank you. I think that's the end of my questions, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Mayor Pro Tem Demont.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Counselor Scully, for your question. I think you hit what a lot of us are wondering because it seems like an incomplete calculation that we're seeing. I mean, I understand what you're saying. However, if you're saying, I mean, it doesn't really seem like an option if you're putting it across that way. I mean, I think we all realize that there are trade-offs depending on how this is structured. And so, if the trade-offs are only extend this out to decrease, and we're not looking at what the roadmap is, such as the new plant and when it's built, and other capital investments, then, you know, of course, there's no cost savings because you're just going to have to push that down into other rates. Is that, do I get that pretty accurately?
Yes, but that's what item, sub-item B in each one of those is. If what you're saying is you want to see an overall revenue reduction, then it's no longer revenue-neutral, and you can make those modifications to tiers, but under the assumption that you're reducing revenue. That's the difference between A and B in each case.
Okay, and so, let me dig into that a little bit more. So, last week, we talked a lot about the overages in budget that we typically see from year to year. I know that's not constant, but it seems to be the trend. And so, I feel like if you expanded those areas, it's, you know, and take into account some real, looking at what those trends actually have been, you know, there may be room there. And so, I guess that's the point I'm getting at, is we're not seeing a full picture with this. I understand the trade-offs, but the way that it's written is confusing. Because I, I mean, I think that most people, including most of us, seem to be looking at this because I saw heads nodding when Catherine was, or Counselor Scully was asking her question, and it would seem like it would be a reduction for the consumer. I want to throw out a couple of things. And so, I did a little bit of homework, well, quite a bit of homework since last time, since I recommended some tier things. And I think it's pretty average or general that you guys compare, you know, where we are in the region. And so, I looked a little closer at some of our partners, and I wanted to bring this point. And, you know, I'm not saying that we want to be this, be our tagline. But if you look at the city of Arvada, for example, they're, you know, they tout that they're the lowest-priced water in the metro region. I mean, that would be a fantastic thing to be able to load about. That's not where we're at. But if you look at their structure, it's not just the rate that caught my eye. It's their actual tier system. In the city of Arvada, and I understand they have a different situation, but, you know, when we compare to cities like that and we're not comparing the size of their tiers, it's not a real comparison. Because if you look at Arvada, their first tier includes the bottom of all three of our tiers. It goes up to 30,000 gallons for their first tier before you jump to their next tier. I don't know, it's hard to answer these with this level of information. I think, you know, what I was hoping for was a little bit more around, here's some trade-offs that we can make, how it would extend out the 2025 project, and what trade-offs we could make in order to try to ease the pain when people go into those higher tiers. And what the actual, you know, you have in here like the Tier Two or Tier One might pay more. Well, what more? Like, what's the average more? Is it, you know, $4, $5? You know, what's that, that actual average? And I'm going to need to be able to see that before I make an educated, you know, decision or direction to say, yeah, that sounds appealing to me. So, right now, that's kind of my top-level thoughts and some of the things I wanted to bring forward into the conversation with my colleagues.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. The next question is from Counselor Seymour.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I appreciate the questions or thoughts from my colleagues too. And I appreciate all these options, plus then the status quo, as the mayor brought up too, and then how we back into the pricing on that. My question is, if we're looking at, say, in Tier One, the projected rate for 2022, the ask was going to be at $14.13 per thousand, if I'm correct. Would that mean in general that that rate tier is somewhat subsidized by the second tier anyway? And is that a good way to build that base? So, if that was something from an earlier discussion, I apologize. But when this came up for this weekend, that was the first thing that popped in my head was, you know, how, Tier One, and then we all understand that that's critical in our use of water for families. But also, if you have to pay the cost of a system, everyone has to pay that base cost too. So, I'm wondering if Mr. Kirschbaum could give me an idea on that as far as what the base cost of, is Tier One being subsidized by Tier Two?
Actually, Counselor Seymour, the reverse was happening. So, when we did the cost-of-service study as part of the rate and fee study in 2017 and 2018, and that became the basis for our recommendations in 2018, one of the conclusions from the cost-of-service study just within the residential portion was that, in fact, lower-use water users were probably subsidizing higher-use water users' consumption because the cost in each of those tiers was not accurately reflected in that cost of service, which is why the recommendation was made in 2018 for a significant, for a non-proportional increase in rates in the tiers for 2019. If you're, if I can read correctly from the workshop presentations, Tier Three had an increase in 2019 of 47%. That was to offset that difference that existed between lower and higher water users. And it is one of those six integrated policies that were agreed to in 2018 to make sure that over the course of eight years, we got those proportionate to cost in each of the tiers.
You know, I think it might be helpful too, just to remind particularly people listening, that people pay the rate across the board for the first 6,000 gallons of water, that we charge for the first 6,000 gallons of water. It doesn't, the rate doesn't go up until you get beyond the 6,000 gallons. So, everybody at 6,000 gallons is paying that rate. As you move up, people in that next category are paying for that amount of water, up to 20,000 into that rate. I want to ask a fundamental question. We are assuming we have the revenue correctly stated and projected. And I believe what I'm hearing is that you were hoping that the look at the tiered system was going to in some way help everyone, or at least distribute the money in a manner where nobody would really be harmed. And I'm only saying this because this is what I'm hearing. I want to make sure we're headed the right way with you. But when we, that B on there is very important. We believe we have the revenue right. If you don't, fundamentally, you don't believe we have the revenue right, and you want to see less money spent in the capital program, that has a different set of reported outcomes. At that point, we've got to talk about the reason we believe, which is what we've done to this point with many meetings, we've got to reestablish that. And if the policy is going to be to spend less money on capital, the impact on that is stretching the infrastructure investment on a longer schedule. Counselor Scully asked what it would look like to go from 2025 to 2027. That's another project we're working on. But we are using this tiering schedule as a discussion point tonight with an assumption that you'd be willing to have some people bear the brunt of reductions for others. A flat rate, for instance, would have, would not, would create a situation where the customers all paid the same rate, and then it was completely based on their usage. Just personally, I can tell you that one of my things that I've understood and learned through this process is that we need to conserve water to save everybody's long-term costs. And that's not incenting saving water, right? So, but I want to get back to this issue. How many people, how many of you council members, you're six, believe we have the amount of revenue we're projecting that you have confidence that we're shooting at the right target?
Mayor, I believe Counselor Voels is not visible. I just thought I would check on his behalf if he's still on. I beg your pardon.
Thank you for bringing that up. I just unmuted myself noticing the same thing. Counselor Voels, are you here? Do we need to take a pause until we get you back? Okay.
Mayor, I just moved him back over. If you can just give him one second to get back on. We just moved him back over. We noticed that he had dropped off, and he's just been moved back into the meeting.
DCM Dorr, did you see how long, how long about, did you notice he had been off?
Thank you. I believe it was a very short time as Mr. Trip was concluding his comments.
Mr. Trip, you may have to repeat yourself. We'll double-check because I think that's an important premise to double-check.
Counselor Voels, I see that you are self-muted. Can you, can you let us know if you can hear us? Or if you are able to share your camera?
Can you hear us, Counselor Voels? Counselor Voels, can you let us know at what point you dropped off? What was the last thing you remember hearing? And we'll back up the conversation.
No, that's fine, go ahead. Just continue on, please.
Well, we were about to get polled, polling each other on what City Manager Trip just said. So, I wanted to make sure you heard the question, the premise of the question.
Oh, I did, yeah. The question, Counselor Voels and all of you, is this discussion is premised on whether or not the assumption that the amount of revenue we need in the years that we needed both, the total amount of revenue, and we've got that right. We've got to agree on that. Because then, who gets charged what, you know, becomes a matter of the policy. But if we're going into a tiered system thinking that we're going to be able to improve the situation for some folks, but it's not going to harm other folks, that's not possible if we're going to have, if we're going to attempt to generate the same revenue. We obviously believe it's the right answer. But as a policy matter, you can tell us that you want to spend less revenue on capital infrastructure, and then we've got to figure out a way to model that. And we'll report back to you, you know, what the changes in the schedule and levels of risk are.
Just real quick, I want to make sure we're all operating on the same premise. So, when you say the revenue, that this revenue that we're predicting that we need, I'm presuming you mean the 2020 revenue that we modeled, not the 2020, I'm sorry, the 2021, 2020, since it's the same rate structure, not what we had originally forecasted for 2022.
We did work last year. Yeah, I do. We did work last year based on feedback we received and a deep dive with a combined team from the CFO's office and Public Works to dig in, to look at all kinds of options to change the revenue performance. And we saved $700 million. And we've talked before a lot about what that was. So, we've really, we've really kind of run that. So we've really, we've really kind of run that rag. And now we're at a point that we're using that number to try to predict, to predict based on the tiered system, how to generate enough of that income on an annual basis to meet that Water 2025 goal, to replace the sewer pipes and water pipes, you know, in the time that's required, to meet the comprehensive plan back to 2013 and its development, all of those, all of those objectives. And so, but it's premised on having a shared assumption of how much revenue we need to generate, and having a shared assumption of how much revenue we can generate, what's acceptable, feasible, desirable, and viable. It's got to be acceptable to our customers as well. This is a tough time. You know, we're at that point in history where the people who built this, a large part of this city, after the annexation and the growth of the significant growth of the city 40 years ago, developers and tap fees paid for a lot of this initial construction. Now, the people who live in those homes and run those businesses that are connected to that sewer, they've got to pay for it. That's where, that's where the revenue comes from because we're well beyond having tap fees and development pay for the cost of the construction of the new infrastructure to support us for the next 40 years. So we're going to need to find a way to make these two lines meet up, and we're listening to you this evening as to what options you're willing to accept.
All right. Looking in the queue, it appears next up, we have Counselor Scully.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, Mr. Tripp, I want you to understand, I do understand where the revenues are. Tonight's discussion on the tier expansion actually clarified that for me a little bit. And I do support what we think, what we believe the revenues are necessary for our utility. Again, what I stated last week was I was concerned about a pandemic and that not everybody's in that recovery, and how can we, and I knew this is not a popular thought, but how can we perhaps move that, delay that, that increase? So, but thank you for clarifying the tier system. I did have another question. So, Mr. Kirschbaum, I do know you talked about this in our hours and hours of information on the utility, which I just truly want to thank your staff for. I hope our residents have taken time to, if they did not get to hear us live, they went and listened, because it was tremendous information. And I promise anybody who listens to the entire thing, you walk away, I'm pretty sure you've earned a degree in water management. That was a joke. Everybody smile and laugh. I have a question, though. Where do apartment buildings and townhomes fall in this infrastructure? Do they fall into tier three? Or do we break them down? Because, I mean, really, if you live in an apartment or you live in a townhome, you're probably not paying water directly. You're paying it to an HOA, is my assumption. I know that's how it works for several of the people I know who live in those type of situations. But that can be a large impact on their rent or their mortgages. And I'm curious, how do we break that down?
There is a rate classification on the, on the published rates called multi/HOA/irrigation. Apartments, certain common HOA usage and irrigation fall into that category, and it equates to approximately tier two. So to be more precise, I'll give you, I'll give you the exact rate for that classification. That classification, the in-city rate, is $7.11 per thousand gallons. Presently this year, the tier two residential rate is 735. So it's roughly equivalent to about tier two. And that, that's a blended rate because they, that would include both interior and exterior all combined for, you know, a multifamily apartment complex where there are not individual meters.
Does that rate change? Like, so for me, I own a single-family home, and my two highest months are July and August, but the rest of the year, I fall into tier one. So you're saying that changes for them throughout the year?
For that rate classification, that is the rate for the year. It changes year over year, along with any, any percentage rate changes that you make to our, based on our recommendation. So it changes along with the tiers.
Mr. Kirschbaum, it's still consumption-related, so the total bill to that particular customer will vary based on consumption, based on different months. I believe that was part of the data as well.
Yeah, certainly. I mean, they, it's, that classification is a single rate, but it's per thousand gallons. So, you know, it's, depending on what the amount of water that flows through that master meter, it's billed at that rate, $7.11 per thousand gallons.
And I appreciate, thank you for that answer. I appreciate that you knew that right off the top, too. I know it's your job, but I appreciate that you did know it. I guess my concern with that is, is that, you know, the whole, the whole premise of tier one was to help those who don't use as much water, perhaps typically they have smaller yards, can't afford, don't have as much income availability to afford different areas of living. And yet, I feel like we're punishing those who live in apartments and townhomes for, and often they're in the same boat. But that, that's probably a whole different conversation and something we have to look at some other time. I don't know how to solve that right now, but I just, it popped into my head, I actually had some residents talk to me about it this weekend, and I had, I had just never thought about it. I really didn't know. So thank you for your answers. With the information tonight, I, it doesn't feel like any of these tier adjustments are really an answer. So I don't know that I could move forward with any of these. So I'm anxious to see what the outcome is of if we spread out the increase over five years and we move our Water 25, 2025 to Water 2027. I guess that's where I'm currently sitting in hopes that maybe that will bear something better out, but I'm starting to wonder. So thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Are there any, I think now at this point, I want to get back to City Manager Tripp's question that he asked us to just kind of baseline, do we think that the revenue projected that we need to meet the capital infrastructure, did they get it right? And so, is the assumption that if we did a tier adjustment, we would still need to meet those revenue projections and therefore have to readjust the tiers? So is this, this is basically saying, are we presuming option A or option B? I heard from Counselor Scully, I believe she said, and please nod if I heard you correctly, you believe they got the revenue projection correct? Okay. Mayor Protem Demont. Sir, you're muted.
I have a couple of comments to make that will answer your question. Honestly, I reject the premise of the question. I can think of five different ways that I can drive safely to City Hall. Each of those different ways have different costs, different lengths, but they all get me to City Hall. What I was hoping was that we look at our path to delivering clean drinking water, and we figure out a cheaper path to deliver that water from Stanley Lake, from the mountains to our residents that gets it there safely. I think we all want that. This isn't giving me, and really, the path, I wasn't looking to make the path. I don't know the system well enough to be the person to make the path. I'm not the subject matter expert that you want making that decision. Last week, I did bring up the idea of an audit. I know that wasn't a popular idea, but I've talked to enough people and been in this community long enough to know that some people who think that the prior administrations and prior leadership did take care of the system and did plan ahead, question whether or not we need a plant. Now, I have uncomfortable feelings about where we're even going in the direction. That's why I brought that up. Maybe I could be made more comfortable, but, but right now, I'm trying to understand, is this what's really needed? Is there another path that continues to provide clean drinking water to our residents at a rate that is more affordable to everybody across the board that brings more equity?
So what I'm hearing from Counselor Demont is his answer is actually, I don't know if this is the right revenue. I'd like to still go cut him back to the drawing board and see if there's a different path. Is that a fair summary? Okay. So the answer to that would be no. Counselor Seymour?
I'm a little frustrated by the question itself, too, but I, but to get more exact, I think our revenue projections over the last couple of years have been a little low. And as I mentioned last week, last year, not including the 24 million in grant money that rolled over from the previous year, I believe we were $35 million over on our budget. So I think we have at least that amount of room, taking into account that last year was a very hot and dry year. But as I've been told over and over, it's going to continue that way. So I think right now, we're at about a plus factor of 35 million to our budget.
Could I address the point?
It looks like Director Kirschbaum would like to respond to that comment.
Yeah, if I could address that point, and then I'd like to hand off to Larry for more complete answer. But the carryover is a normal part of every year and every budget. There is, there is either, there is either a plus carryover or not. You'll see what those carryover numbers are next year and what, and what comes to you for approval. It won't be $35 million, and it is based on whether there, whether it was a hotter year, a cooler year, project savings. Last year, we, we cut our budget very significantly to get through COVID. That ended up generating savings. Those are the things that you're referring to, but it does not add up to $35 million. And I think you'll see, you'll see that carryover in next week's packet. Larry?
Thank you, Mr. Kirschbaum. I wanted to comment on this. You know, one of the challenges of just looking at the utility fund, financial audit, looking backward, or its budget looking forward, is that it's a mix of capital and operating activities. And that, that's unlike our other funds. That's unlike our general fund of the city, where we're very focused on operations, and unlike our general capital improvement fund, where we're very focused only on projects. And frankly, in the general capital improvement fund, where there are significantly larger carryovers from year to year for projects, savings that occur, project managers encounter savings and do value engineering throughout the course of every single year in order to find savings, but they've got to have the appropriations and sign contracts upfront before, and do bids and proposals and such before that they can carry it forward on projects. So the funds are appropriated. You know, in 2020, just to kind of split out the utility, I just looked at this very carefully, we were actually 1.6% under budget in revenues. So there wasn't a surplus of revenue. There wasn't an overage of revenue. Charges for services were 98.6, excuse me, 98.4% of budget, or actually under budget by some hundreds of thousands. So we're doing a very good job of budgeting our operating charges for services and our operating expenditures. Of course, in our operating expenditures, we're paying very careful attention to all of our supplies and, of course, all of our labor inputs, everything that, power, everything that goes into producing water for our, for our customers. So if we, if we split out the operations of the water utility from the capital, you'll see in our operations, there, there isn't a carryover of millions of dollars. There just isn't. We're looking at that very carefully. So it's really the, it's really the capital where that's occurring from year to year, and a reason why we can't program that in or count on it in years in the future. In fact, what we've done as part of our modeling is to look at our, the inflation of our costs. The inflation of our costs, we've been pretty conservative in the past, and we have gotten more aggressive so that we can get to that lowest overall cost possible. So I just wanted to add to Mr. Kirschbaum's comments that, you know, that carryover is going to be necessary for the infrastructure as it was, and not something that we can, we can count on going forward. Mr. Kirschbaum?
A little, a little further, Larry. Thank you. That, that was more exact. On the capital side, as we've discussed before, there is going to be carryover because as we award projects throughout the year, we only pay invoices as work is completed and accepted. So in any given year, we are paying invoices for projects that may be from that current year, maybe from the year before, maybe from the year before that. So there's always going to be amount of carryover, and that's why we follow your financial policy for the utility very closely with, with those amounts that are carried over. And they, they never leave the utility. They either roll into the capital project reserve or the rate stabilization reserve, and they always roll into the financial model. So in essence, they are being factored in because that, that carryover rolls into financial models.
You know, Counselor Seymour, I sincerely apologize for asking a question that frustrates you. That is not my intention. I want to work with the six of you to find an answer here. On this question of what to do with this tier, I'm working off an assumption that we have the revenue right. And it's because of the time and effort that's been put in to get to this point. If you don't believe the revenue amount that we're seeking is right, you probably can help everybody. You probably can change the tier system and not be as harmful to people. I'm not working off that assumption because we believe what we brought to you is the right amount of money and the right schedule at the projected risk that we thought we ought to take. And so I'm really not, I really sincerely apologize, I'm not trying to frustrate you, but I am trying to get to the difficult discussion to get the best direction we can to serve you.
Thank you, Counselor Seymour. Are you ready for me to go on to the next person, or do you have a follow-up comment?
No, thank, that's all, Madam Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Smith?
I'm just looking at my notes here. It is, it is kind of perplexing as far as having, I understand these options coming forward, but I think much to other council members' points is that this isn't looking at the entirety of the picture. I appreciated Counselor Scully's original question as far as tier one and tier two and how that didn't quite make sense, but I think numbers is entirely what we're missing here. Once you explained it, it made a little bit more sense as far as the A and B and where we're looking at as far as the give and take and push and pull. And I think, I mean, just looking into this issue in and of itself, we spent multiple hours, multiple days, going over the ins and outs of not only the background, but the rate structure, how we got to today, what it looks like for operating, maintaining the system as far as clean, delivering clean, safe, reliable water. And I feel like we're still having the same discussion on the 100th day and not necessarily finding the correct answer. I know that that can be frustrating. However, you know, I'm looking at this in its totality, and, you know, I wasn't originally... And, you know, I wasn't originally, I'm not 100% on moving forward with an audit, but the more I think about looking at this and where we're at as far as, do we trust the revenue numbers? Do we think that we're there? Maybe an audit can tell us if we are in the right atmosphere or in the right box as far as water rates, what our revenues need to be, what we can have in wiggle room, up or down. Because you're right, carryover happens. That is a normal process for budgets such as ours. But I'm not, again, I'm not convinced that we're in the right revenue space. I don't know how you can agree with revenue and turn down a water rate increase. So that, to me, is perplexing. But so to answer your question, Mr. Tripp, I don't agree that we're in the right revenue space, but I don't necessarily want to say where to go from here as far as the ins and outs. But the more that we talk through this and process this, I'm thinking that an audit might be the only clear direction at this point.
Counselor Bowles?
I don't understand. So can someone explain to me, what is the audit designed to do? I don't understand. I guess I need more clarity on that.
So we're not asking right now about an audit. We're asking, City Manager Tripp asked each of us if we think that the staff revenue predictions on what we needed to generate in order to maintain our system in 2021 going forward so that we can do Water 2025 were accurate. And so the reason we need to understand that, and I'm just recapping, I apologize very quickly because you were off for a little while, and I'm not sure what you heard and what you didn't hear.
Yes, sir.
But the reason, no, that's fine. The reason we're doing it is we've been asked, there was some conversation, I believe by only two counselors, last week, that said, one saying, let's maybe look at that third tier, getting rid of it, and one saying, perhaps we should add a fourth tier or maybe adjust some rates and, you know, make the first and second tier slightly higher. And so staff wanted to make sure they fully understood what we wanted. If we were going to adjust the tiers and keep them revenue neutral, each of these options, we would be looking, the impact of that would be item A, the 1A, 2A. If we think we got the revenue incorrect and we want to take one of these actions on the tiers, we would be doing B. So revenue will be reduced and our capital plan will be, the amount of infrastructure investment we were planning on making will be changed, and they'll come back at a later date to tell us to what degree. So what we're trying to figure out is, are we looking at, like, consequence A or consequence B right now? Do you think they got the revenue we need correct in order to move forward? And I apologize, City Manager Tripp, if you would prefer to explain that or Director Kirschbaum, if I've misexplained that, but that was my synopsis based off of the conversation. Does anyone else want to clarify that from staff? My apologies to staff.
No, I think you said it the way I meant it.
And you're pulling through and asking, do we trust the numbers that would make A work in these scenarios?
Foundationally, Counselor Bowles, if we don't have agreement that the work going into this created the correct plan, the revenue, and the years that it gets spent, if you don't buy into that, then you can look at any of these policy alternatives and say, well, there's ways to save money. And we come to you and tell you that we've done everything we can to save as much money as is plausible to keep the utility secure. And so that's where we are. And it doesn't really, changing the tiers isn't going to resolve our issue of the amount of revenue we believe we make. If you want to change the tiers and reduce revenue, if you wanted to B, you know, we can do that. Our report to you is that infrastructure investment will be reduced. I think, I do believe, some of you believe it wouldn't be, that we, that in some way, we either don't need that much infrastructure or there's a different way to do it that would be less costly. Really, I'm not judging that. I'm just trying to get to the, you know, get to where we can all agree on something here. And it isn't, it's imperative to me that it's not going to be the revenue number. And so I don't know that, I don't know that we can, we can't resolve the problem of rebuilding the infrastructure with the change in the tier. We can change the way people are impacted. And we're here tonight, Counselor Smith asked a good question, how does it affect people? Do we have those answers? We have those answers. If you have a question for us, I think Max explained before, one of the differences in what a rate would look like based on, you know, a change that could be made, we can try to answer that or we can get that answer for it. But foundationally, Counselor Bowles, the question for all of you that I'm asking is, do you believe in the numbers that you're being given?
My answer, yes, I do.
Thank you. Okay. So I also believe, obviously, and I guess it goes without saying due to my vote last week, but I agree with the revenues that had been predicted. I also want to remind everybody, we had a conversation in June of last year discussing kind of our bond obligations and the impacts of lowering rates. And this would essentially be a rate reduction. And we had our Director of Finance, Tammy Hitchens, our CFO, Larry Dorr, and our City Attorney caution us about the impacts of those revenue reductions on our bond rating, on our debt obligations, on our ability to maintain our infrastructure. And so I just, I got to say, I agree with Counselor Smith. We've had this conversation a lot of times. And I don't know if we're just keep having it until we get an answer that is more palatable to some people or we want different facts. I'm a little bit perplexed. But for me, the answer is definitively, I think we probably have the rate that we need in order to complete the plan on the timeline that we have right. I think last week, what I heard from my colleagues is that they thought, hey, you know what? We're willing to take on a little bit more risk to have perhaps a little more, a little relief for the community. That's what I heard my colleagues say. And so I thought tonight would be like, how much, how much risk and how much relief? And I do understand that it is difficult for everyone to give that exact number without seeing numbers, right? It feels a little arbitrary. But I also am surprised by hearing just like some fundamental misunderstanding of how our budget and revenues work in this utility and kind of thinking that we have a surplus when those, please correct me if I'm wrong, DCM Dorr or Director Kirschbaum, but a lot of that carryover is actually already spoken for. It's already assigned, it's capital assigned to projects. Those projects just have not been completed. And so it gets carried over until we have to pay the bill. It's not, it's not a windfall of unaccounted-for money. It's money that's already been spoken for and will be paid out to that project upon their completion. Is that correct? Or is that incorrect? And we do have windfalls?
Yes, there are, if I may, Max. There are a mix of projects each year in the utility. Some of those projects will be necessary in the immediate following months, and so those funds are still necessary. Other projects do have permanent savings. However, that's a one-time savings that's small relative to the necessary revenue growth that's needed over the next 40 years, every single year. So the order of magnitude and potential impact from those is miniscule, quite frankly, and the ability to change the amount of revenue, a total revenue change to fund the infrastructure of the utility. Mr. Kirschbaum?
And we have revenues that we gain in a given year. Counselor Seymour is right to point out, when we have a dry year, we're going to have more revenue. But, you know, as we've said, and I'll say again, that goes back into the model every year. If we have a great year and we end up with more revenue, that can impact our ability to set the rate the following year because we generated more income. And conversely, a low-revenue year, you have an impact also. One of the things that the finance team did, which I think is terrific, is they took some of the conservatism away from how much money we have in reserve and how we look at those balances. And we did that from an informed, professional viewpoint. And so we save money by doing that. But all of the money ultimately goes to operate or to rebuild the utility. If all, 100% goes there to do that, and if it comes, a little more money comes quicker than we thought or some savings come that wasn't accounted for, it helps everybody by keeping the rate down in future years.
Just real quick, wanted to ask a couple of questions. First of which was, I heard this conversation about an independent third-party audit, and I just wanted to confirm my memory is correct, that when we looked both at the age and condition of our utility and our rate and fee cost of service study, that we did utilize a third-party independent consultant for that work?
We used a nationally recognized utility expert who assists approximately 25% of all of the utility providers in America in performing that work. You know, if there's a desire to conduct a further audit also beyond what the, I know it changed names, but I'm going to say the CAFR does in terms of audit. If we can define what that is, we could certainly do it. But I would just ask, if we're going to do such a financial audit, there has to be an equally balanced review and audit of the entire requirement for infrastructure investment for the utility. That's the other half of the equation that is equally important here is that we have a very high confidence level in our understanding of the infrastructure. We know its condition, and we have done the work on the asset assessment to know what its replacement timeline should look like. So to me, that's the other half of that equation is, beyond looking just at the financials, please look at the entire requirement. And as we've discussed many times, we are, over the last decade, we're reinvesting at a rate of less than 1% per year.
Thank you for that information. You know, I see that we have another question from Mayor Potem Demont, so I'd ask you to go now. I'll defer my comments till later.
And that was from before. I don't have another question.
Counselor Scully?
Thank you, ma'am. So I guess, thank you for asking that question, Mayor, about whether we had had a previous audit, because I did recall that that had been a topic of discussion and we had looked at that. So I'm, do we doubt that audit is my question? And then if we're going to do another audit, I mean, this is just taxpayer money that we just continually use for things that we have already done and established. And I have resistance to doing that. I think that we have a diligence to use the voters' money wisely, and I feel like we've already done some of this. And then another question that I had for Director Kirschbaum is, I know that you have spoken to this before, but I'm going to ask it again. What is our internal, so I work in compliance, and we have internal audits of our own that we do when, that we, I work for, I work under an accreditation. So I, as a college, I have to meet an audit every couple of years, and I have to resubmit that to my accreditation to allow them to know that I am, that our college is still working in the right direction. I assume the city has to do that as well, especially with the enterprise fund. Do we have internal checks and balances and internal audits that we do?
Well, I would say that's what the CAFR does for us. The utility is part of that CAFR. The utility is reviewed as well. So, you know, beyond that, we do, we do an annual evaluation of both components of that budget, the capital side and the operation side. That was the statistic that Mr. Dorr quoted for you on our operating capital, on our operating side of the budget. You know, the utility is just like every other department in the city in that regard. We're all accountable for our performance against budget.
Mr. Kirschbaum, if I could comment on that, this general discussion of audit and review. For one, the audited financial report, the ACFR, which we just covered recently, this is a system of financial controls and the fairness of the financial reports and so forth. Those are, the financial reports are produced by our finance department, they're audited by an independent CPA firm. That's sort of one dimension of all of this. The other dimension is that we've had an audit of the age and condition of the physical infrastructure of the utility, the concrete, steel, and all the containers, pipes, and so forth, that provide the water to all of the various water tanks. There's been an extensive study performed of that and to some degree, an audit as it was. And that's the study that suggests the replacement of our Semper Water Treatment Plant that was constructed in 1970. We know the history of all of that. That's sort of one audit. Later that, there's even a sort of a third review, and our internal team works very carefully with a company that has produced the pro forma that looks out some 30, 40 years in financing the infrastructure needs and operating needs of the utility. And we perform an annual audit, well, nearly a quarterly audit, frankly, of all of those inputs to very carefully understand inflation of operating costs, inflation of capital costs, estimation of what the inflation, general inflation will be and on. And we have an internal team that performs a regular audit of all those various inputs. And that's what drives the total bottom line revenue that's proposed for future years. That's what we've been discussing recently and for here tonight, the necessary income that's needed to finance the maintenance and upkeep and replacement of the infrastructure. So I think Mr. Tripp's question and some of the discussion happening around it is, is it believed that the amount of money necessary to provide for the replacement of the infrastructure, is that correct? And so it would go back to sort of redoing the work, I think, Counselor Scully, as you described it, of the age and condition of the infrastructure and whether or not, you know, that is, you know, still accurate, holding true and so forth. But we believe it is because we've continued to update that as we've gone along and our internal team of engineers continue to evaluate the various inputs to replace that infrastructure and whether or not things are deteriorating more rapidly or potentially even more slowly. So, Mr. Kirschbaum, I just wanted to talk about those three different dimensions that go into, and the sophistication and cross-checks that go into this whole process, both internal and with multiple external partners. Mr. Kirschbaum?
Mayor, I think we've, I'm going to step in. I'm going to step in. Mayor, I think we, us explaining this is not going to change what I hear tonight. I'm going to make a suggestion. Before I do that, I want to make one other point. We have AAA bond rating, which we've actually achieved just in the last couple of years. We have the highest bond rating that you can have, and it's better than it was five years ago. So I think that's accurate, AAA, and I think it was increased about five years ago. So we have a number of measurements that I think we're doing well, but we don't have concurrence on that. So I don't want to, I don't want to discuss and debate tonight what an audit might look like for you. What I would like to do is respect the request and go back with my staff and develop a strategy to come back and report to you as to how we can meet, you know, the goal of gaining 100% confidence in the work that you're voting on. We don't have that right now. And until we get that, none of this discussion is going to be based in a foundational trust in what we're recommending to you. So I'd like to go back with Public Works, the finance team, and the rest of the people in the organization who are part of this, and come back to you and say, here's what we'd suggest to you. And for instance, it may be that we bring these auditors that we had that developed this work for us back in front of you and let them report their work. Or talk to other experts and redo the work. That will come, you know, that will take time and it will cost money. But until we gain the confidence, in order to move ahead, we're going to continue to rehash this conversation. So I promise you, we'll do that shortly. Now back to the matter at hand. Are we now back then to a rate that you would agree to that is not 3.98%? You voted on that. But around 2% that at least gives us a chance to keep up with part of the CPI and construction index? Can you give me some feedback on that? Could we come back with a 2% increase at least to make some progress there? And then I promise you, we'll come back with an answer as to what your options are on a quote unquote audit.
I can, before I poll, I do see that Mayor Potem Demont had a comment or question he wanted to make on the previous conversation. Mayor Potem, do you want to still get that point out there or do you want to defer?
Really briefly, and then I have some input on what Mr. Tripp just asked. Just briefly, and I appreciate what you're saying and that you're going to come back. I think that Mr. Dorr hit on something when I talk about audit, what I mean. And I don't just mean financially, I mean full audit. I mean, are we on the right path? Is this the right place to get us where we need to be? And a couple of things that I would appreciate, Don, when you come back is, you know, I've often asked, what are we going to be when we grow up? And I know that's hard because we have, you know, a comp plan that's in flux. But we have to know what that target is generally about how many people we think that this system is going to serve if we're going to fund it. At least I need to, I need that to be comfortable. So with that, the other thing I'm curious about that probably feeds into whether or not I can support a 2% increase.
Excuse me, we just lost Counselor Vols again.
I'll pause.
I can hear you, so if you want to keep talking.
Okay, my apologies.
I'm sorry, I could hear everything being said, but.
So I'd have to think about it. And some of the things that I would need in order to make an informed decision is, what does that get us and why do we need it right now? And so just that pros and cons list and trade-off list. I mean, and I'm confident that you guys can give educated, good reasons about why we need that list and why that 2% is, you know, in your view, needed. So I would need that. But a couple of the things I'm curious about, one other thing specifically that kind of feeds into this. A while back, we had been told about the unpaid water bills. As far as, you know, because during COVID, we weren't making people pay and we weren't shutting them off. I'd like an update on that. And as far as like, how much are we sitting on top of? Have we started collecting? Are we starting to shut people off? Are we still, you know, in flux with that? Is that a, you know, a growing tab? I'd like to understand that as well.
Okay, thank you. And I counsel.
Mayor Potem, we can certainly provide that update. This is since, as a body, City Council, you concurred with the re-initiation of the meter shut-off program two or three months ago. We have not resumed that program yet. And for good reason, because utility billing has been doing an outstanding amount of work to try to make contact with all of the customers who have unpaid balances and have been trying to work on repayment plans. So we've been very cautious to go down that road of doing utility shut-offs for non-payment to give maximum benefit to our customers who, for whatever reason, have an unpaid balance. That work has literally taken months to perform. And we are ready to resume. It will probably be in the middle of July timeframe. But we'd be happy to give you all the detail you'd like to have, what has happened from when you gave us the authority to continue to go forward and today. But the short answer is, we have not resumed any water shut-offs at this point.
Great, thank you for that information. I look forward to hearing more about it.
Certainly.
I go ahead and continue. I guess, at this point, City Manager Tripp, what direction do you need from us right now? Are you wanting us to ask on the 2%? Was that, was you wanting to poll on that?
I'm going to come back to you and as soon as I can with an answer as to how we can offer you something that would reestablish the kind of confidence we need in the work. We have to proceed and I have to create a rate recommendation to you, for you to adopt. And absent any other information, that would have to be zero at this point because I haven't heard any concurrence on something more than zero. You know, I'll just, and I think Mayor Potem raises a good question. You deserve to know, you know, what is that number? I'll just tell you as a preview of that. The Consumer Price Index, we found out between then and now, last Monday and now, is more in the 5% range. So we're really going to slip behind. And it's just a number, the 2% number is a number that I grab at, that at least it would be something. And what that means is that all of the things that we buy wages and salaries and benefits and construction costs, the construction index is probably double-digit. I'm just afraid we're slipping back. And if we could just generate a little more revenue, I'm just attempting to do that. And, you know, you could easily say you haven't justified it because we need to see the audit, and I appreciate that. If we can't raise rates until the audit's done, that's what we'll have to do. That's going to have consequences. But, you know, again, it's just so important to rebuild the trust of the information you have to take these actions. That I think that's what we have to do next. And I want to talk to my staff about how to do it.
All right, so you do not want to poll at this point to ask if people would be comfortable with the 2%? It sounds like you want to come back with further information on the asset management audits that have been done and the accounting. I just want to make sure I'm clear with what you're asking tonight so that we are giving you all of the data you need to take your next step.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for that. Yes, I think that's correct. But I would like to know if the six of you want us to do that work and come back with that. You understand why I'm suggesting that? Because we're going to take a little time and we're going to get back in front of you. And we're going to say, okay, if we want to build 100% confidence and support and these recommendations moving forward, here's a way and here's the time and here's the cost to do it. And probably also get some opinion from the folks that have done this work previously, if they've ever run into this sort of a situation.
I feel like I already heard from three council members that they agreed with the recommendation as far as where the revenue needs were at. So, and we heard from three that don't. So I feel like they've already answered that. So there are three folks, it sounds like, that would like to hear a little bit more and kind of prove out yet again, are we in the right place? Are we on the right track? Is the path that is proposed the only path that gets us to safe drinking water? What I've heard Counselor Demont say is he wants safe drinking water, wants it at a lower route, a lower rate, rather, and recognizing he's not the expert. Is that correct, Counselor Demont? But wants to see if there's a path that gets from A to B with those kind of variables. Is that correct, Mayor Potem? Okay. So I think I've heard clear direction, three folks saying, trust the staff and the independent consultants. Three saying, just need a little bit more data to get there or to trust it. I don't know if any additional polling will give you any insights. But if you want to ask of us something specific that will help, please let me know.
Well, for the three of you that are fine with the numbers you've got in front of you and you have trust in it, do you understand why I'm suggesting what I'm suggesting? Because we don't, we're not getting, you know, we're stuck. And we need to be on the same page, all of us.
So I feel quite frankly, a little frustrated because we have spent an inordinate amount of time going over this information multiple times. And so I feel like we gave very clear direction to the area experts, the staff experts in this field, saying we want the lowest possible rate in order to maintain a safe, reliable drinking water supply. That was proposed to us. We've rejected it. So I feel like we've already said, listen, we're prepared to take on a little bit more risk. I feel like the question might be, how much more risk? I feel like Counselor Seymour has made a few points like, hey, sometimes, you know, we're pretty cautious with how we're budgeting. There's sometimes extra money above what we've budgeted. Although I think DCM Dorr made a good point. We're actually under budget this year, not over budget. But perhaps we could be a little less cautious, even more so than what's already been built in there. I just, I don't, I don't know. I guess I have my cynicism that going at this one more time is going to bring everybody to the same page at this point. I'm wondering if we need to just figure out what is a level of risk or rates that we're willing to rate relief that the majority of the bodies willing to get to. But I could be wrong. That's my concern is that we'll go into a lot more money because I trust the fidelity of the recommendation. I feel if we pay for an independent auditor, we're just going to get the same information again. And I don't know if people will, I don't know if there will be some level of information that gets people to buy into it. That's my concern. Because I don't know if it's really an issue of fundamentally not trusting the data or if it's really just fundamentally being worried about the impacts on our residents. And maybe it's a bit of both. So that's my answer. I'll poll my colleagues. Counselor Scully, are you comfortable with coming back and doing maybe an audit of what we've already done to get everybody there?
You mean doing an additional audit? I thought you would ask the question of, am I comfortable with a 2%?
Well, that was one question. But then I just heard from City Manager Tripp. He wants to make sure that the three of us are comfortable with giving, recompiling information and reevaluating it to get, maybe I'm misunderstanding. I believe that's what City Manager just asked for was the ability for us to try to get all of us unanimously in support of.
I'm asking if you're okay with us spending the time to come back and give you options. You don't have to, you don't have to be voting or polling tonight on whether or not you do an audit. We don't, you don't have any information in front of you. All I'm saying is that I'll do some research and explain to you what some options are. And if somebody has a better suggestion, a different suggestion on how to get to uniformity and confidence here, I'm open ears.
I'm in support, Madam Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Seymour?
I believe we need to keep working together on this.
Okay, Counselor Smith?
I would concur with Counselor Seymour.
Mayor Potem Demont?
I agree, we need to keep working on this.
Counselor Vols? Oh no, it appears we lost Counselor Vols. Is he in the waiting room or frozen? Oh, he's gone now.
No, I'm still showing him in the meeting. Counselor Vols, can you try and speak? I see that your microphone is, but are you able to hear?
Are you talking to me?
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree with the majority. Yeah, I cut out for just a second there. I'm having a horrible time here tonight. It's, I'm on two different devices and they're, we're going to have to go to City Hall next time we meet if we do this. This is not working for me here. So sorry about that.
That's okay. But you agree that we just, let's give staff some time to come back with some options?
Correct, yes. I think, yeah, I agree with that.
So I don't know if we gave you any additional clarity on what those options should be. But it sounds like the majority of council would like you to come back with some additional options and, I guess, to Mayor Potem Demont, maybe again, some additional information on the need and potential paths.
And I also heard a concern about expressing more clearly the risk.
Okay. Is that all that we need tonight on this discussion item?
It is, thank you for your attention to this. Thank you for being open. And we'll do whatever we can to get us together on this. So we'd be ready to move on to the first item on the agenda, Mayor.
The next item before us is presentations. And it's going to be presentation of the Street Division's pavement management process. Director Kirschbaum or Director Tripp?
Yeah, it's either going to be Deputy City Manager Opie or Department Head Kirschbaum kicking this off. We've got staff ready to make a presentation. And thank you for the time tonight to do this.
And actually, I would just say, we've been at this since 6:30. Let's perhaps give council and all of those watching this tonight an opportunity for a brief break. Let's convene back here at 8:24. So my clock shows 8:24. Is everyone back? It looks like we're just waiting on Mayor Protem Demont. All right. We have Mayor Protem Demont with us. City Manager Trip or Director Kirschbaum or DCM Opie, would you like to kick off the presentation?
I'll take it, Mayor. This is Max Kirschbaum again, Public Works and Utilities. This evening Kurt Mulemeyer, our Street Operations Manager, will be presenting what I like to call the State of the Streets, kind of a presentation that we try to get to you annually. It was on, it was on the study session several weeks ago that was canceled due to technical difficulties. This is the earliest. We could reschedule that presentation. And with that, I'll turn it over to Kurt and he'll handle the Q and A as well. If, if he needs any assistance, we'll help him with questions. But over to you, Kurt.
Thank you, Max. Good evening, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Councilors. As Max mentioned, my name's Kurt Mulemeyer. I'm the Street Operations Manager in the Department of Public Works and Utilities. Also joining me tonight is Brock Hufford, who is the Pavement Management Coordinator in the Street Operations Division. We have a brief presentation tonight that covers how we manage, prioritize and maintain Westminster street network. And with that, we'll jump right in here to the first slide. You know, so I believe it's always important to start out a presentation with, why is this important? And in the top right corner of this slide, there is a snippet of the 2020 Community Survey. And the question asks the survey takers to indicate how important well-maintained streets are. And 94% in 2018 and 93% in 2020 stated well-maintained streets are essential or very important. And we'll dig a little deeper into that on the next slide. But on the left side of this particular slide, you kind of get a snapshot of what our street network looks like. Our network is made up of 2,430 street segments that comprise 1,135 lane miles. And when we talk about this, we're not talking about state highways, which you can see listed there. Those are not included in those numbers. And our current street network has a replacement value of over $600 million. And that $600 million doesn't include related assets such as curb gutter sidewalk, street signs, striping and pavement marking. 600 million is strictly the pavement. If I could have the next slide, please? So going back a little bit to the community survey, this slide provides some further context into that question. As you can see, 90% of survey participants state that the importance of well-maintained roads is essential or very important, while only 42% of the survey participants stated they believe Westminster roads are very good or good. This number has decreased slightly from the 2018 Community Survey. Can I have the next slide, please? So in order to inventory, assess and develop maintenance and rehabilitation plans for our street network, we have utilized a computerized pavement management system since the mid-'80s. Our current program that we began using in 2017 is called Road Matrix and is proprietarily owned by StanTech Consulting Services, who are a worldwide engineering and consulting firm. StanTech uses industry-standard principles and equipment to perform condition assessment on all 1,135 lane miles of city roadways. Once all that condition data is collected, each street is assigned a numeric value that we call the PQI or the Pavement Quality Index. This value ranges from zero to 100, with zero being completely failed section and 100 being an absolutely perfect section of pavement. That data, the data that goes into this value is collected by several different methods and then combined to obtain the final PQI value. The data consists of, and there's a little bit of animation on this slide, so we could start to click through that a little bit. You click through the presentation. So surface distresses, smoothness, keep going there. Structural, oh, we have to back up a little bit. So those are the four things that go into the PQI data. So surface distresses, that's kind of self-evident, but what you would be able to see on a road surface, potholes, cracking, weathering, ravelling, that kind of stuff. Smoothness, you know, pretty obviously how smooth the road is. The structural integrity data is collected via a falling weight deflectometer, which measures the load carrying capacity of roadway. And finally, the thickness, which, you know, obviously is how thick the pavement section is, is an indication of how long the roadway will last. All of that data combined will equal the final PQI value. Can I have the next slide, please? So now looking at all of our roadways combined and all of the data combined for all, for all segments, you can see the data here for the last two years and where our roads stack up. Our average PQI in 2019 was 65.6, which would put that in the fair condition. And after our 2020 survey, that number has fallen to 57.9, also in the fair category. The decline of our roadways from 2019 to 2020 of 7.7 PQI points exceeds what we were anticipating. However, it is not overly surprising when you consider the region of the city that surveyed in 2020 encompasses 50% of all residential roadways. We break the city down into three sections. When we survey, we have the southern survey zone, the central survey zone, the northern survey zone, and the central survey zone, which was done in 2020, is the largest of the three and encompasses 50% of all of the residential roadways, which plays into why that number dropped so significantly from 2019 to 2020. If I could have the next slide, please? This chart is the fundamental pavement management chart that is the basis for most pavement management systems in use today. The red line is representing an example of the typical pavement section over the course of time. And again, there's a little bit of animation that we'll have to click through here. If you could start that. So initially, you know, when you go from excellent to fair, you see a reduction in pavement quality of about 40% and would typically mean that pavement has already used up 75% of its life. And then when you go from fair to poor, that would also result in a 40% drop in quality. And when the pavement section reaches the very poor category, it would only have about 12% of its life remaining. What the, there we go. Keep it, you can keep it on that slide for a minute here. The fundamental principle of pavement management and timely maintenance is to identify appropriate intervals and trigger points to employ lower-cost preservation strategies in order to extend pavement life. This can also be said as identifying the right treatment for the right road at the right time. That's kind of a pavement management cliche. So you can see, those intervals would be those green lines up in the top right there. And if you do that correctly, you spend low-cost maintenance, you extend the life, you don't have to invest in the more higher-cost rehabilitations, which we'll talk more about here. And, yeah, I mean, money you're spending in preventive maintenance will cost 70 to 400 times as much for rehab to get essentially the same pavement condition. Can I have the next slide, please? So along that same line, you can kind of see what are actual, and these are real-world costs for us today. You know, when you're rehabbing or maintaining roadways that are in the excellent to good condition in that green box, the cost is $1,265 to $56,390 per lane mile. And then when you get down into that middle section, which is the fair category between 70 and 40, your cost for rehab and maintenance there runs from $77,000 to $102,000 per lane mile. And then when you drop down into the red box there, which would be your bad roads, roads that have failed, your costs get $291,000 to $457,000 per lane mile. So you can kind of see the disparity in all of the costs there. I can give an actual real-world example here just to, for comparison purposes, but if you think about 112th Avenue from Federal Boulevard to Sheridan Boulevard, right in front of Front Range Community College, pretty well-traveled, common section of roadway throughout the city. You know, our cost to, our real-world cost to crack seal that road, that is just to fill the cracks, is about $12,000. Our cost to do a mill and overlay on that road, which would be to grind off the surface and put two inches of new asphalt on top of it, would be $975,000. To completely reconstruct that road, that is, take it from the surface down to dirt and build it up to a, to a brand-new road, would be $4,345,870. So that kind of gives you the run in between those three categories there. If I can have the next slide, please? This chart shows how many lane miles we have treated and how much has been invested in the last four years, in addition to the current year. You can see, you know, we're averaging in the neighborhood of 60 to 70 lane miles per year. And industry best practice, it is recommend that we treat 10% of the road network every year. And that would, that would equal almost 114 lane miles. So we're falling well short of that objective every year. Can I have the next slide, please? So the next few slides here are going to provide, I talked a little bit about some of the treatments that we use, and these are going to give you a little more description of what those are and what they look like. So these, these, these treatments would be considered preservation, more maintenance-type activities, this first group. And so the top left, you can see, is the crack seal operation I spoke about. The top right is a slurry seal operation, which is just a seal coating. The bottom right there is a very thin bonded overlay that is also considered a preservation technique. If you can go to the next slide, please? We get into rehabilitation strategies. That's when we talk about overlays, where we're actually building one to two inches of overlay up on the existing surface. Sometimes we will grind the existing surface, sometimes we'll just grind the edge. But the top left is a typical overlay operation. Top right would be a hot-in-place recycling operation. And the bottom left is the finished product. If I could have the next slide, please? We spoke a little bit about reconstruction. Obviously, the costs of reconstruction are much higher. You know, this, this is what we're talking about when we say reconstruction. We take from, we take the existing pavement. Sometimes we grind it up into the existing subgrade, sometimes we haul it away, just depending on conditions, reshape in a new existing subgrade, and then construct an entirely new pavement section to get a brand-new road. And this is all residential street in the countryside neighborhood from a few years ago, as an example. And you can see what it looks like today after, after the two slides up the top. If I can have the next slide, please? We're looking here at, you know, obviously I mentioned the value is 600 million. We're currently, on average, investing 4.9 million annually. And if you, in terms of asset value, we're investing less than 1% of the asset value every year. StanTech, who does our payment management program for us, they provide several recommendations with that program to improve your numbers, to start, improve your payment condition. Number one thing they recommended this, this year with this go-around is that we increase our annual maintenance and rehabilitation budget to at least $10 million. So you can see, we're, we're investing half of what they're recommending. And then the other recommendation is to continue the data collection process that we have been doing over the last three years. We'll show a slide here in a little bit that shows what the, what the net result is from status quo versus investing more. But if we continue on the path that we're currently on with the 4.9 million per year, we will start to see a reduction in our PQI, and it's going to start to get more and more significant. And we'll start to see that in the charts here as we move forward. If we could have the next slide, please? I think there's an, and, there we go. So this, this chart, oh, we're going to back up, there we go. So this chart is the baseline chart, and that's basically saying if we stopped investing in roadway maintenance today, this is the path we would be on. So the left would be our PQI rating. You can see where we're at 2021, we're at the 57.9. By 2030, we would be close to below 10. Our roads would really start to deteriorate and fall apart. So if you can have another click, please? So this is the current path that we're on, and you can see where we are headed. We are predicting right now that we will be at a PQI of 40 by 2030, which puts us right on the fringe from fair to poor in that category at the current rate that we are investing in our roadways. One more click, please? This is the investment that StanTech recommends. What you see there is our current path in 2021. If we increase to 10 million per year, we increase a little bit and then see a slow but steady decline in condition. We don't actually increase. In order to increase our current PQI and maintain that, that investment would have to be in the neighborhood of 12 million per year. And one more slide, please? So this, these slides are always just reminders of what our infrastructure could look like. All of these pictures are of actual Westminster roads. They don't look like this today, but they looked like it at the time we took the pictures and then we have repaired them. Certainly don't want our more instances of this, but at the current rate that we are investing in maintaining our roads, I think it's likely that we're going to see more instances of like, of this. And I believe that's the end of our presentation at this time. So next slide. I'm happy to, happy to address any questions that any of you may have.
Counsel, are there any questions for Mr., for Kurt? Sorry, Kurt, I don't want to butcher your last name.
Kurt's fine, Mulemeyer, yeah.
Mulemeyer, Mulemeyer. Definitely shows the significance. I'm always struck with how each level of repair is more than an order of magnitude more than the previous. So definitely a great case study for the, the value in maintaining infrastructure before it's a real expensive issue to, to fix. So I appreciate this presentation. I know last year, one of the questions I asked, I believe, was, what are the- last year, one of the questions I asked, I believe was, um, are, what are the real use impacts that we could consider to, to lower kind of the wear and tear on our roads? Um, and I think it's a good question because there's a lot of big trucks that they're, you know, that operate in our business or in our community. Um, can you remind us which ones are kind of the most impactful on our roads?
Sure, that, that's a, that's a great question, Mayor Sykes. Um, you know, what we see is the biggest impact on our roadways and causes the most damage to our roadways are uh, garbage trucks, uh, delivery trucks, um, buses, unfortunately. Uh, heavy axle vehicles uh, place an impact on our roadways. And, um, you know, the, the fewer of those we can have on our roads, the better our roads are i- in the long run.
Thank you. Um, it does look like we have some questions for you. Um, Counselor Smith is the first in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, just a couple of quick questions. Uh, how often do we need to entirely rebuild a, a road?
That, that depends greatly on a number, on a number of factors. Um, I would say our ultimate goal is to never have to rebuild a road. Um, we, we would like to continue to preserve what is in place and continue treating just what's on the surface. Um, unfortunately, that's not reality. And I would say, you know, most payments are designed to last anywhere from 20 to 30 years. Um, if untreated, you know, you would be looking at reconstructing a roadway every 20 to 30 years, depending on how much traffic is on it. Um, many, many uh, s- conditions that may exist with the roadway. That, there's a lot of variables with it, but I mean, that's what the design life is for most roadways.
Okay, so I'd assume that that P Q I would uh, determine at what point then that road gets replaced, replaced, entirely replaced?
Correct.
Okay.
And, and in many instances, um, you know, the pavement management system is trying to give us the most bang for our buck. Um, and sometimes the most bang for our buck is not to reconstruct. And many of those roads will end up getting deferred and you will end up doing more preventative maintenance um, and just allow a road to slowly kind of um, get worse and worse and worse.
Okay, and then, and you may not have this answer, but what percentage of roadway does 4.9 million, yeah, 4.9 million get us uh, each year? So that includes like, is that just the crack sealing? Uh, how far would that get? I, I, I know you had the breakdown, but on average, would that get us how many miles if we did all of that in one, one scope?
So, you know, if, we typically do, right now, we're, we're getting about 60 to 70 lane miles for our 4.9 million dollars. And that's a variety of, of products, including crack seal, including uh, slurry seal, including overlays. Um, we try and do a variety of, of projects every year, just depending on, um, you know, what the, what, what the road is needed and what is recommended through our payment management system.
Okay.
Does that make sense? I'm sorry, I'm, I'm not sure if I answered your question fully there.
Yeah, um, I mean, that seems really low, really, or over, for almost 2,500 uh, lane miles that are miles in our city, that's, that's, we're not investing enough. So, um, that's all my questions. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much for the questions, Counselor Smith.
Counselor Seymour?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Uh, Mr. Mule Meyer, uh, asphalt, my understanding is asphalt is, is very recyclable or almost 100% recyclable. And you, you mentioned the um, uh, recycle and place machinery. Is there, is there a place where we use that or, or can be used more often?
That's a great question, Counselor Seymour. Uh, yeah, asphalt, um, the asphalt industry will tell you that asphalt is the most recycled material in the world at this point. Um, all of the asphalt that we purchase and put down our roads contains at least 20% recycled asphalt in it. Um, we have in the past, as you saw in the picture, used the hot in place recycling, and there are some advantages to that. Um, but again, that has to be used in the right location, on the right road. It's not a, it's not a fix all or a cure all. Uh, we have to be very cautious where we use that process. Um, there's a lot of heat and a lot of uh, other variables involved in that product that can damage adjacent property, trees, that kind of thing. So uh, it, it's a good process. We just need to be cautious where we use it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Thank you for the questions.
Are there any other questions? Um, I have one last question, um, particularly as we just had a conversation about water. I was wondering if you could talk to us about any coordination that may occur between the Streets Division and public work with the C I P plan. Do you guys try to coordinate um, projects to, so if there's going to be a cut to fix a, a water main or something like that that's scheduled, um, do we have streets kind of operating um, to maximize the benefit for the disruption? Does that make sense?
Yeah, yep, absolutely. Another great question, uh, Mayor Sykes. Uh, we do absolutely coordinate with um, all of the utility operations and engineering and planning uh, to make sure that that doesn't happen, that we don't, you know, resurface a street and one year later they come down and put a sewer line in. Uh, that said, uh, that, that has happened. It could happen again, but we do our very best to coordinate our efforts and prevent that from happening. Uh, we speak at least twice a year about what our projects look like and what their projects look like. And we try and define um, any conflicts and resolve those before, before that happens.
Thank you. Um, and the next question we have from you is for, or for you rather, is from Counselor Vols. It appears he's frozen again. Um, Counselor Vols, can you hear us? Um, Clerk Parker, can you tell if he's on, on your end?
It, it appears that he is. Um, he may have just turned off his camera. Counselor Vols, are you, are you able to, to hear?
I can hear you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
Okay, yes, sorry. Yeah, okay. So, Mr. Mule Meyer, a good German, hard to pronounce last name, so uh, I hope I did okay with that.
Perfect, perfect.
This is Counselor Vols. I don't know if you can see me. Uh, the, my computers both are acting really weird here tonight. Can you, and I don't know if you can answer this question directly or have the information tonight, but maybe in the future. Do we, how do we compare? I agree with Counselor Smith. It does seem like that's a low percentage. How do we compare to our neighboring jurisdictions, the city and towns around us as far as our investment and how we're uh, investing in our uh, pavement preservation? Or do we know that?
Y- yes, w- we do know that. And then that, that again is a, is a terrific question. Um, the Colorado Asphalt Payment Association, who is a, an advocate for asphalt payments, um, compiles data from, I believe it's 93 government agencies in the state of Colorado and uh, what their payment condition is and how much they're investing in payment, maintenance and rehabilitation every year. Uh, and we definitely participate in that. Um, I would certainly love to, to send a link to their, their uh, brochure that they put out every year for, for everyone to look at. But um, I, I can tell you that Westminster, Westminster is exactly average. Um, we're not high, we're not low. We are the mean um, for investment in our roadways, uh, which is kind of astonishing, but uh, there certainly are people that have more money and invested in roadways uh, than we do. And there are certainly people that have less uh, money and investing in the roadways than we are. So I'm happy to send that link to all of you for you to, for you to look at. It's, it's fascinating. Um, the, the, the largest city uh, that owns roadways in, in the metro area or in Colorado is obviously Denver uh, at 5,000 lane miles. And then the smallest one on this list is Palisade, who has 25 lane miles. Uh, so it's kind of fascinating to see who's spending what and where. Um, so I'm happy to send that uh, link to, to everyone to, to look at.
Well, that'd be great. Thank you. I appreciate that.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vols. Um, and the next question is from Mayor Pro Tem De Ma.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so a couple of things. So you had mentioned early in the presentation about maybe being off on our projections. So is, like, is that pretty typical? Like, as we project, like, how long the road's going to last? I mean, are we really far off where we thought we would be? Or can you talk a little bit more into that, that point that you made?
Absolutely, absolutely. So, um, as I also mentioned, um, you know, this particular system came online in 2017. So there are, there are streets in, in Westminster that have only been surveyed with this system one time. Um, and so the, the forecasting and prediction, predicting methods with this uh, software are only as good as the data that you have. So only having two data points and trying to forecast where they're going to be is a challenge. As we get more data collected, that predicting and forecasting is going to get more dialed in and, and more um, closer to what actual results will be. Another issue um, that we have found is some of the data, uh, we had to use uh, best information available. Things like date of construction, uh, pavement thickness when it was constructed. Uh, we just don't have that data for every single roadway in the city, and some of it had to be um, assumed, if you will. Uh, and I'm sure that played into the process as well. I, it, there's a multitude of reasons why there was a more significant drop than uh, was forecasted.
That, that makes sense. And to dig into that a little bit more, so like when we switch systems of, of how we judge, like are, do we totally drop the, the old way of projecting? Or do we kind of match it up as we kind of um, transition into the new method of being able to forecast? Um, and I'm just curious, like ongoing, like what the plan is to try to measure up and see if this system is working well for us? And if it's hitting the mark, like I imagine there's some metrics that you guys are looking at in order to see how it's working out for us over time, understanding that's going to take some time and iterations and, you know, different surveys over the years to really be able to judge it really well and fine tune it. But I'm just curious like how you do that.
So we will, um, to, to answer your first question, the, the existing payment management system that was replaced, we really, there's really no translating um, into a new system. We, we, we went from walking to sprinting with the two payment management systems. So it's very hard to transfer any data. Um, this system that we have now is very technologically advanced. Um, it is using state of the art um, technology to get all of this data. Um, they, they actually drive the road at the posted speed and are able to pick up all of these little things that are on the roadway. If that gives you an indication of how sophisticated this system is. Also, this system is becoming more and more prevalent. Um, I, I'm not trying to deflect from your question, but you know, our data also just changed over to this system based on our experience with it. Uh, they were so thoroughly impressed with how it was working for us, they purchased it and are now using exactly the same system that we are. We will have to closely monitor things. We always do ground truthing, uh, which would be you get your results and if something just doesn't seem right, you get in a car, you go out and you look at it. And does this, does this make sense? Does this number look like it should be? And if it's not, um, you kind of dial back. This system comes with pages and pages and pages of data to support it. Uh, and you can dive into that data and see, you know, what's bringing this down? What, why is this street seemingly ranking lower than we think it should be? So that, that's kind of the process that we, we're, we're going through now and will continue to go through the more times we collect the data.
Great, great. No, that's, that's really good to know. And I'm pleased to hear that it seems like it's a spreading the word that this is a good system. Um, I guess the other question that I have, and this might be for City Manager Trip or maybe Mr. Door, just kind of looking at this and seeing that we obviously, um, you know, have room to improve. Um, when will we have kind of discussions about how we get there? And how this is going to fit into our overall plan and budget process? I know we've taught, we've touched on it a little bit as we've talked about budget, but is, I'm assuming this is like a precursor to a bigger conversation.
We were making great progress for three or four years in a row. Uh, increasing the amount of money into, uh, into streets. Um, that leveled off uh, during the pandemic year and uh, we coincidentally had a, a downturn. We, we've never been to the level that was recommended with the new pavement management s- system. But to directly answer your question, you're going to get a recommendation in the September budget that go, that comes to you, Mayor Pro Tem, uh, to do something with our infrastructure fee and um, and uh, pile that money into streets. We've been hesitant to do that. The infrastructure fee's on the water bill. Uh, and that's just the reality. And so we've been hesitant to do it, but it's, it's time that we're going to have to start doing something with our streets. So that's one of the things that you have under your control. We're also, you know, looking at federal stimulus money and how we use that, how we recommend the use of that money. Um, that's a one time proposition. There's lots of demands and desires for that, but it's certainly a priority. And uh, degradation of streets is one of the most significant ways to, to diminish the quality of life in, in a city. Over my time in this work, um, potholes, bad streets, reconstruction of streets and shutdown of traffic are one of the, um, one of the biggest reasons that people get upset with local government. So it's got to be a high priority for us. Eight years ago, we, we, seven years ago, we presented a report that talked about this infrastructure issue that we had coming on us. And, and much like water infrastructure, our streets were largely built by developers. And, um, and now the people who have been driving over them and will be, we'll be using them in the future, we've got to find a way to generate some money. Um, we've also got to find some way to get some of the real abusers off the street, or at least generate some additional revenue from them that we're not generating today. So, big priority and uh, I hope that uh, I hope that we can uh, meet the, meet the uh, the big responsibility we have here.
Can I follow up a couple of things with some, something, a few things you said? So you said, you know, that we've been behind since we've used this new system. Um, Kurt had mentioned that we've been using this new system since 2017. And so understanding this is a lot more sophisticated and hopefully gets us closer to the mark. Um, I'm assuming that prior to that, it wasn't that we were necessarily underfunding or, or were we compared to recommend that system?
I can't, I can't tell you that. We can get the answer. And I would understand why you'd think I said that. I didn't mean to see, to say that the system is the reason we're behind. We've been behind and uh, it was apparent uh, initially with the system and the, and the pavement information that we got, uh, that we had some catching up to do. But um, it's a better system and uh, it's not judging anything that happened years ago. Better technology comes along. This city has been a first adopter of better technology. And so I'm not surprised that we were using it before another city. Um, that's not surprising. It happens often.
Yeah, just trying to follow the point. And I guess the other thing that I'd a- a- ask Mr. Trip is when you, and I, I brought this point up before, but I just would like to reiterate it. One of the things that I've heard frustration around uh, and that infrastructure fee is just how it's defined. So I hope as part of that recommendation, and there's some definition around that, that.
I think that's a really good point. Yeah, I heard, I, I've heard that come up before. And it definitely um, needs to be clearly defined and people need to know where it's going. And you know, we ought to be accountable to report on an annual basis exactly what people are getting out of it too.
Yep, that's great. Those are all my questions. Thank you for the feedback, Mr. Trip.
Yep, thank you.
Um, thank you so much for this presentation. Um, before you go, I do have one last question. And it's in regards to the recently passed Transportation Bill on the statewide solution. Um, I don't expect you to have um, available right now, uh, Mr. Trip. But at a future uh, meeting, it'd be nice to see how much um, Westminster plans on, or anticipates rather receiving um, in, in relation to that bill. And if that will be adequate to help us with some of this, um, you know, kind of scary um, declination of our um, road and uh, index or P Q I rather.
Yes, thank you. I, I don't know whether, um, whether Deputy Door has any, anything to say on that. If you, if you do, Larry, come on. But um, if not, we'll get, we'll get, we'll keep you briefed on that. And we'll, this is going to be, you know, like a lot of the problems we run into, it's a, there's a multi approach. You take the one time money and you try to get um, maybe a little further ahead in those few years. But we, we need a sustained revenue source that meets that ongoing need.
Correct. And, and to be clear, I'm talking about not federal dollars, but the state transportation.
State transportation, yeah.
That just was passed. Yeah, um, wonderful. Thank you so much for this. Without seeing any additional questions, um, we'll um, say thank you uh, to um, Max's team and Mr. Mule Meyer um, for this presentation and move on to our next trans- uh, transportation presentation. This is the um, overview of the DRAST Transportation and Mobility Community Engagement. Um, Mr. Trip? Mr. Trip, do you want to take it away?
Yeah, Deputy Andrews is going to introduce this. Thank you again for time to do these tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Trip. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem and City Council. Jody Andrews, Deputy City Manager. And thank you for the opportunity to introduce tonight's presentation on the draft transportation and mobility plan for the city. This is very timely, given the earlier agenda item and discussion regarding the condition and stresses on our city streets. The plan before you this evening is an important milestone in the city's journey towards an enhanced transportation and mobility network for our community. It's been developed with significant involvement and input from residents, businesses and stakeholders. And it supports every one of the city's strategic plan goals, establishing a citywide multimodal transportation vision and framework to guide the implementation of needed improvements. Some of the benefits of the plan I'd like to highlight include improved options to connect residents, commuters and visitors to amenities, shopping, employment and housing, encourage and support local, regional, state and federal partnerships, and also to guide future investments. I would also note that the plan will supersede and replace three existing plans that, that you'll be familiar with in our community as well. That's the 2030 Bicycle Master Plan from 2011, the Comprehensive Roadway Plan from 2008, and the Mobility Action Plan from 2017. With that, I would like to ask Christina Evanoff, the city's Transportation and Mobility Planner, to make our presentation this evening. And also note that Dave Downing and Heath Klein from Community Development are here with us as well to help answer any questions. Christina, over to you, please.
Thank you, Mr. Andrews. And good evening again, I'm Christina Evanoff and I'm the Transportation Mobility Planner and Project Manager for the development of the Transportation Mobility Plan. Thank you, Madam Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilors and Meeting Attendees for your time tonight to receive a presentation on the overview of the Draft Transportation Mobility Plan prior to its release for community input beginning next week. For tonight's presentation, I will begin with a brief background on the purpose and development of the Transportation Mobility Plan, with the majority of my presentation focusing on the content of the plan. I will conclude the presentation with an overview of the remaining next steps to complete the plan development process and staff will be available, as Mr. Andrews said, to answer your questions after the presentation. Because I covered the plan materials briefly tonight, I wanted to add that I noted a reference of each chapter in the lower right-hand corner of each slide. So if there's a topic I talk about in detail and you want more detail, please look for this reference in that lower right-hand corner that points to the chapter in the plan where more information is available. Oh, my slides are not up. Hold on a second here. Can I get my first slide? And actually we're into the second slide now, please. Sorry about that. That is not my slide. Is the title of the slide will be, what is the Transportation Mobility Plan, I believe? Thank you. So before I begin with the overview about the plan and the plan content, I first wanted to start with a brief recap about why the Transportation Mobility Plan is needed and why it was developed. Westminster, as well as other cities across the region and across the nation even, have experienced changes in population growth, demographics, the economy and technology. And communities have also evolved over the years in how people want to travel to their destinations. And there has been an increased emphasis on transportation safety, community health and economic vitality, as well as a shift from vehicle centric to more people centric street planning and design. Cities have recognized it has become increasingly important to understand the current and future transportation needs of our communities and to develop and refine community plans, policies and programs to address these needs. Transportation improvements in Westminster have been guided by different types of projects. And as Mr. Andrews said, the adopted bicycle and roadway master plans. And Westminster has had a history of street networks that focus on moving vehicles instead of providing a connected system that looks at movement of people in all modes of transportation. The city recognized that now is the time to evaluate and identify the current and future multimodal transportation and mobility needs of Westminster's residents, commuters and visitors. These needs will now be addressed through the implementation of Westminster's first comprehensive multimodal transportation master plan. Development of the Transportation Mobility Plan began in mid-2019 in coordination with the Westminster Forward Planning Initiative, as well as with other local and regional plans and projects. The plan development was informed by analysis, application of industry best practices and staff input. The plan was also most importantly informed by community and stakeholder input at key milestones, as I will discuss later in this presentation. So Westminster's Transportation Mobility Plan is a 20-year plan establishing Westminster's transportation vision, supported by seven goals. The plan identifies near-term and long-term strategic projects, as well as programmatic and policy actions. The plan also includes multimodal transportation safety and connectivity improvements along key corridors in Westminster, as well as guiding actions to prepare for the integration of evolving technology and advancements in community environmental health. Westminster's new transportation plan will supersede and replace the existing adopted bicycle master plan, the adopted comprehensive roadway plan and the mobility action plan. The Transportation and Mobility Plan comprised of, is comprised of an executive summary, 11 chapters and four appendices shown in the teal boxes on this, on this slide. I'm going to provide a brief description of each chapter here and more details in the following next series of slides. So Chapter One, the introduction, is an overview about the plan and why the plan is needed. Highlights about the existing conditions of Westminster's transportation system are also included in this chapter. The introduction chapter is also supported by and references Appendix B, the Current and Future Conditions Report, where more details are provided about the state of the transportation system. Highlights from the Current and Future Conditions Report were provided to City Council in early 2020. The second children engagement highlights how the community was engaged throughout the plan development process and summarizes the input received. This chapter is supported by more details provided in Appendix C. The Transportation Mobility Plan Vision, seven goals are discussed in Chapter Three. And Chapters Four through Eight provide an overview about how each transportation mode area, multimodal streets and vehicles, transit, bicycles and pedestrians, were evaluated to identify the mode, the final modal networks shown in Chapters Five through Eight, as well as the project recommendations shown in Appendix D. Chapter Nine provides an overview of some of the programs and upcoming technologies the city, in coordination with partners, should be proactively preparing for the potential integration into Westminster. Chapter Ten identifies the 11 strategies and over 40 near-term and future actions the city, together with partners, can implement to achieve Westminster's transportation vision and goals. Chapter Eleven discusses the key next steps to implement the plan, including identification of early action. And finally, Appendix D, corridor profiles and projects, identifies the recommended multimodal transportation improvement, capital projects and studies along key corridors and intersections in Westminster. After the plan is finalized and implemented, and other supportive technical documents and toolkits, as shown in the purple box here on the slide, will be developed and used to prioritize projects and to guide the implementation of elements such as transit improvements, street crossing improvements and development of transportation programs. Next slide, please. To ensure the Transportation Mobility Plan meets the current and future needs of the community, outreach and engagement was conducted to gather community and stakeholder input throughout the plan development process at key milestones. The project team used a variety of in-person and online engagement tools to collect community comments. In addition to community input, the development of the plan was also informed by input from the community advisory team comprised of 28 individuals representing various community interests and organizations, everything from schools to healthcare to housing and even some residents. The community advisory team convened virtually three times throughout the, the plan development process to provide input. And a number of key themes emerged from the community engagement and with our community advisory team, including the community's desire to have a more connected, safe and reliable multimodal transportation system for Westminster. Many indicated the importance of Westminster having improved transit service and bus stop amenities, as well as more bicycle lanes that are connected and safe. Community input also reflected the importance of maintaining streets and improving, improving street operations to reduce congestion and delay. Safety was expressed often, especially with concerns around speeding and the safety for each mode of transportation, especially pedestrians and bicyclists. Collectively, the input received is reflected throughout the plan and the plan recommendation. So Chapter Two of the plan provides a summary of the input received with a more detailed summary of community engagement available in Appendix C. And Chapter Two and other areas of the plan will be updated as needed after community input is received on the draft plan this summer. Now, there's one thing I always like to note about community engagement is that the input doesn't end with completing the development of the Transportation Mobility Plan. Community and stakeholder input is also, will also continue to be important during the implementation of the transportation projects and programs after the plan is finalized. Next slide, please. The Transportation Mobility Plan Vision and Seven Goals, as shown on this slide, were created through community and staff input to ensure the plan and implementation of the plan's actions and projects meet Westminster's transportation and mobility needs, as well as supporting other local and regional goals. The draft vision and goals were shared with City Council in 2020. The goals were used to help guide the development of the strategies, actions and projects in the plan. And the goals will also continue to be used to guide the prioritization and implementation of the plan and identification of resources, including funding, as identified in the strategic plan. And the goals will also be used to track progress of the plan implementation. One item I'd like to especially highlight on this slide is input from the community and the plan's community advisory team indicated the importance of including equity more in the plan. Therefore, the plan vision and goals, as well as portions of the plan, were revised and the specific changes to the vision and goals are shown here in the teal underlying in the stars. It will also be important for equity to be integrated in transportation projects and in the development and implementation of additional transportation policies and programs. Next slide, please. Oh, other way, please. Thank you. Addressing Westminster's transportation and mobility needs includes identifying near-term and future multimodal transportation capital improvements, investments and studies along key corridors and intersections throughout the city. To develop the final improvement and investments to carry forward in the plan, improvement concepts were identified and evaluated for vehicles, transit, bicycles and pedestrians, and together as a multimodal system. The analysis resulted in the final recommended improvements discussed in the modal plans in Chapters Five through Eight and reflected in the improvement projects along corridors and intersections identified in Appendix D. I'm now going to briefly discuss each of the modal plans here on the slides. The street network is discussed in Chapter Five and identifies the future number of lanes and street types that will meet future travel demand along major corridors in Westminster. This reflects street projects where lanes might be repurposed for improvements such as addition of bike lanes or projects that recommend street widening with multimodal improvements. Street projects also include intersection improvements, installation of traffic signal technology and corridor and traffic studies as identified in Appendix D. The Transit Plan, discussed in Chapter Six, identifies priority corridors that are best suited for improvement, such as signal technology and dedicated transit lanes that improve bus transit reliability and safety at intersections and along corridors. The Transit Plan also recommends corridors best suited for stop and station improvements, including passenger amenities such as shelters and benches, as well as improved access and connection infrastructure, also known as first and last mile connections, such as crossings and sidewalks. The bicycle network discussed in Chapter Seven identifies a network of bicycle facilities such as bike lanes and crossing improvements to be implemented throughout the city. The bicycle network of improvements, shown in details in Appendix D, will add 62 miles of new bicycle facilities and 15 miles of bicycle facility upgrades citywide to complement the existing 40 miles of on-street bicycle facilities and 150 miles of trails throughout the city today. And finally, the pedestrian network discussed in Chapter Eight identifies a network of citywide pedestrian improvements, improvement projects, including the addition of sidewalks, side paths and crossing improvements, focusing on areas with high pedestrian activity or missing pedestrian facilities. Over 100 near-term and future pedestrian improvement projects along key corridors and intersections are identified in Appendix D. Next slide, please. Appendix D, Corridor Profiles and Projects, provides an overview of the existing conditions along 24 major corridors in Westminster, primarily north, south, east, west arterials. And in those existing conditions are followed by near-term and future recommended multimodal transportation improvements for each corridor. Each project along these 24 key corridors includes a brief description, followed by estimated implementation initiation timeframe, planning level cost estimate ranges and considerations including funding and partnerships. Some of these projects may already be underway with most funded by grants or approved city budget. Improvements along the other key corridors are shown in, in the tables at the end of Appendix D and are organized by mode of transportation. The development of the project recommendations shown in Appendix D were informed by analysis, community input gathered to date, existing plans and projects, city staff input and application of industry best practices. The recommendations in Appendix D totals over 260 improvement projects, some of which could potentially be combined depending on priorities, resources and timing. In addition to the transportation capital improvements, Appendix D also includes recommendations for corridor studies and traffic analysis, as well as safety evaluations at key intersections. Studies and analysis, such as a future 72nd Avenue corridor study as identified in the strategic plan, are important as they further evaluate and define improvements along corridors and at intersections. With, with the results of these analysis and studies used to prepare for next step implementation, including design and construction and identify funding resources, including grants. So from these priority quarters, other quarters not shown in the plan can still benefit from future improvements through the application of technical and guidance toolkit, planning and design industry guidance, as well as those improvements identified in future analysis, planning and design projects. The improvement in project recommendations shown in Appendix D will also be supported by the actions identified in Chapters Ten and Eleven, as well as existing internal and external projects, programs and processes. Next slide, please. Two new transportation policies are introduced in Chapter Ten that will be expanded and integrated into city projects and programs. The first policy is for complete streets to ensure Westminster's transportation system will be planned, designed, built and maintained to provide safe, connected and accessible transportation infrastructure for all users, regardless of age, ability or transportation mode. The second policy is for traffic calming and speed mitigation to promote neighborhood safety for all transportation users through the implementation of traffic calming measures along streets, supported by education and enforcement strategies. These policies are needed not only for their direct benefits for the community, but also we're seeing transportation grants are evolving to include elements such as complete streets and vision zero safety in their grant applications as requirement. Chapter Nine provides an overview of the key, excuse me, Chapter Nine provides an overview of key programs and technology that the city, in coordination with partners, should evaluate, expand or integrate to support Westminster's transportation system and to ensure successful implementation and the ongoing operations and maintenance of transportation improvements. The first topic discussed in Chapter Nine is the development of a transportation demand management plan and program, also referred to as TDM in the industry. And the programs associated strategies are also identified for city employees, residents, development, businesses and visitors. These types of programs, which many cities do have today, provide information, encouragement and incentives to help travelers know about different types of transportation options available to them. The TDM program, which will support the other city, other city initiatives, including the Sustainability Plan, for example, also encourages the use of transportation options that are lower emission and non-single occupancy, occupancy modes, resulting in transportation system optimization and reduced environmental impacts. Chapter Nine also includes an overview of the continued expansion of intelligent transportation system technology, also known as I T S. This is for the traffic signal system and other technologies, elements along the transportation system. For example, For example, over the next few years, the city will leverage over $1.2 million in grant funding to implement traffic signal technology citywide to improve the safety and operations along corridors and at intersections. And finally, Chapter 9 also introduces evolving transportation technologies that the city should continue to evaluate for potential integration into Westminster, including micro-mobility, also known as scooter and bicycle rentals, as identified in the new strategic plan. The chapter also discusses exploration of autonomous vehicles, also known as driverless vehicles, like those vehicles that are used to, that were used to do transfer food donations between Growing Home and the MAC last year. The chapter also identifies the need to evaluate and prepare for other transportation technologies, such as automated and connected freight technology. Next slide, please. To ensure the current and future capital improvements and investments along corridors and at intersections are successfully implemented and maintained, it is also, it is also, and to provide a truly comprehensive transportation modal system. Important implementation, programmatic, and policy strategies and actions have been identified and are presented in the tables in Chapter 10. 11 strategies, as summarized in key themes on the top half of this slide, identify the key focus areas to achieve Westminster's transportation vision and goal. These strategies focus on the four transportation mode areas, as well as parking and implementation. Development of the strategies were informed by community, stakeholder, and city staff input, application of industry best practices, existing plans and projects, and other citywide goals. These strategies are achieved by over 40 near-term and future actions, and a number of the key action themes are now, are shown on the, the bottom half of this slide. Each action listed in Chapter 10 is associated with an implementation initiation timeframe, similar to the structure that we have in Appendix D. Uh, planning level cost estimate ranges that exclude maintenance and operation costs, action initiation partners, and which plan goals the action addresses. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Thank you. And finally, the last chapter of the plan, Chapter 11, Implementation and Next Steps, identifies over 35 early actions the city, in coordination with partners, can initiate over the next few years, depending on priorities and resources. A number of these actions include key early tasks to initiate the implementation of new projects and programs, whereas many other early actions may be already underway or will continue to build upon established projects and programs. Some actions will require evaluating the expansion of the city's resources to manage and implement the plan's actions and projects. And a number of actions will require support through partnerships and external funding resources, such as grants. Chapter 11 also includes a high-level discussion of the plan implementation next steps, including funding resources, as well as an introduction to the next steps to track and report on the progress of the plan implementation. An implementation work plan will be developed within a year after the plan is finalized to help prioritize the early and near-term actions and to be used to inform resource needs. Next slide, please. We are now in the third and final phase of the plan development process, uh, with the draft plan presented to you tonight, and a completion of the final plan later this summer. We are planning for online community input on the draft plan to begin a week from today, on June 28th, uh, and to continue till July 19th. The draft plan and appendices will be posted online with an associated survey to gather community input on the plan. The survey will have individual chapter questions, as well as opportunities for participants to provide open input. The survey will be available in both English and Spanish, and announcements about the community input opportunity will be disseminated through city communication tools and with the help of the plan's community advisory team. Also, during June and July, before the community input period closes, the project team will be presenting an overview of the draft plan to select city boards and commissions. For example, tomorrow night, I'm going to be presenting to the Planning Commission. And the project team will also be engaging with staff from RTD, Dr. Cog, CDOT, and Jefferson and Adams Counties to discuss the plan's recommendations, and those that will require coordination and partnership with these agencies. Additionally, jurisdictions adjacent to Westminster will also be notified of the draft plan, as some of our recommendations include opportunities to ensure seamless cross-jurisdictional, jurisdictional connections and coordination during project implementation and through other partnership opportunities. After the draft plan, community and stakeholder input is gathered and reviewed, revisions will be made to the final plan as needed, and the final plan will be prepared and presented to City Council at the August 23rd City Council meeting. After the plan is finalized, as I mentioned before, the transportation engineering and planning team will begin development of an implementation plan and begin initiating a number of the early actions identified in Chapter 11. Next slide, please. This concludes my presentation, and I thank you for your time, and we look forward to your feedback on the draft plan. I also wanted to say thank you for the time and contributions over the past two years of the Transportation Mobility Plan Project Team, consisting of city staff and the consultant team. I will now ask Heath Klein to join me, uh, to answer any of the questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris, um, Ms. Evanoff. For my colleagues, um, if you have any questions, please type your initials into the queue, or any comments. It was a very thorough presentation. Um, it looks like we do have a few questions. The first in the queue that I see is, um, Counselor Smith.
Thank you, ma'am, and thank you, uh, for going through the presentation. Um, the only couple of questions, or maybe more or less comments that I have, uh, re, are in regards to the operations of bus movement and-
My apologies, Counselor Smith. My, my apologies, I believe Counselor Vols has, um, popped off again.
I can, I can hear you, so if you want to continue on, I can hear everything being said.
Okay, sorry, I just wanted to make sure we're all part of the conversation.
Yeah, thank you, sir.
My apologies, uh, Counselor Smith.
You should get back to him, person. Um, but the, uh, the, my comment is, um, regarding the dedicated transit lanes and/or queue for jump lanes. This, this can work, uh, if there was mass education. Uh, and I'm not just talking about for operations or bus operator education. I'm talking about for, uh, vehicular, everyday driver, uh, education, because this can be very confusing. Um, so I, I'm hesitant on adding these, um, as options for making sure that, uh, we're getting to our destinations in a timely fashion. Um, those are really the only things, things that I want to flag, as far as, um, I'd be hesitant to move forward in that regard with the queue jumps and the transit lanes, um, just because of safety conditions. Um, and then the other, uh, comments that I would like to, uh, kind of address is that for the transit, uh, for speed and reliability section on 40, page 48, where it says that, um, we'd like to have transit lanes, I, it works when there are longer, longer spacing corridors. Um, so when we say 92nd and 112th, my fear is that those are too short of a corridor. If you have North and South, like Sheridan and Wadsworth, which are dressed in there, uh, and federal, that I'd be more apt to, uh, have those transit lanes for. But for 92nd and, uh, 112th, I just get concerned with, if, if that would be a good use of money for that stretch, because having buses go in and out, as far as, um, it makes sense when they're in a dedicated transit lane, but when they have to merge back into actual traffic is when you have the pinch point and the traffic congestion. Um, so that's where I get a little nervous in that. But those are just my comments, um, but this is very, not only a thorough presentation, but a thorough report, so, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Smith. Um, Mr. Klein or Ms. Evanoff, do you want to respond to any of those comments or questions? Or should I go on to the next round of questions?
I actually can clarify, um, the speed and reliability corridors, don't necessarily mean that a transit lane might be there. It might be just intersection improvement. As we know, when we do corridor studies, it gets a little bit more in-depth to determine what exactly that infrastructure improvement will be. So for now, it's more of a overarching, that corridor can benefit by helping to move transit more efficiently at a high level right now. But as we get into studies, we'll go into the determination, is it just intersection improvements like queue jumps to get the bus through the intersection? Or is it going to be a transit lane? But yes, I agree, those, there are certain types of corridors and certain types of bus operations that warrant a, a, a single bus lane, or, or even a bat lane, which is a business access transit lane that vehicles can share right-hand turns and things. So I agree with that. So those will be the next steps, is once we get into diving into deeper into the, the corridor studies.
Great, thank you.
Counselor Smith, does that answer all of your questions? Are those all the full comments? Okay, great. The next, um, series of questions come from Counselor Scully.
Thank you, ma'am. Um, thank you for the presentation tonight. It was very thorough, and I appreciate all the work we're doing to ensure, especially that we are connecting that last mile. We hear that from our residents continuously. Um, and I really liked how you connected everything to equity, equity. Um, I think that that is a key component of our transportation, so thank you. Um, I have some questions on the bicycles. Um, so I, I am asked continuously from our residents, who like it on public record. Um, can you tell me if all of our bicycle paths are now officially connected? And clearly marked? I know there are wayfinding signs, but are they clearly marked that they are connected and where to go? Just curious.
I'll start, and I'll probably have Heath chime in a little bit, too. Um, no, they are not. In some areas, they are, and in some areas, they're not. And that is why we're doing this plan, to take the bicycle plan, all other elements of the roadway, and put them together in one major network to look at the gaps. Now, this plan does identify some initial gaps that we can tackle and take care of. Um, however, we will need some next-step actions to fully evaluate the signage, for example, and where those connections, and also the detail of the connections. Are they underpasses? Are they at grade street crossings? To connect those with those. So we now have this comprehensive system of a network to look at those gaps and where we need to fill those in. So it's depending on the areas, sometimes it's connected. Um, Heath, I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that. Okay, we're good.
Christina, you did a great, a response. Thank you, Counselor Scully, for the question. It is just something that the city is looking to make those connection points, and this plan is helping us identify where we are missing those and where we need to step, uh, step up our connection. Thank you.
And I was going to add just one more thing. It's timely with Kurt's presentation, is we look for opportunities to partner up with this resurfacing program to implement bike lanes. So that's a little why they're disconnected, is we took the, add-on opportunity why they're out there and save some costs by putting them out in the streets at the same time. So that's, it's not by any fault, it was just taking advantage of them. But we know sometimes connections are expensive to fill those in. So again, looking forward to implementing the plan.
Thank you for that. Um, do, do we have, um, any idea of how many people are actually bicycle commuters in our city?
Let me bring up, I can do it really quick. I have my plan in front of me here. I think we have mode share. Now, the mode share is most likely going to be 2017 to 2019. Um, that's the catch that we're running into with the pandemic trends on numbers. Let me see if I can find it. If not, um, I'm paging through my plan really quick. I will get back to you on that. Um, it is also in the existing conditions report. Um, it has a little mode share pie chart in there of a percentage. Now, that is based on census data, so there's a little disclaimer to that. Um, but I will add is, for example, on trails, I know working at the Parks Team, we want to get more counters on trails to get some numbers of users on trails. But on streets, there's different ways to do counts beyond just census data. There might be some opportunities to collect some data to tell that true story. Um, I don't have the number in front of me, but I will get that for you, um, on that mode share. Um, but it's also in the current and future conditions report as well.
Thank you. Thank you, I look forward to seeing that information. Um, I know that, um, one of the things that I've always really enjoyed about Westminster is that we, we have attempted to be a walkable, livable community. And I include bicycles in that, so thank you for your work on that. And then, um, you talked about crossing improvements for pedestrians. Um, what are, what are some of, just offhand, what are some of the things that you're looking at improving for pedestrians?
I'll provide a list, and then Heath can provide more of an engineering perspective on this. Um, it's everything from striping, the simple, more inexpensive, is making sure the striping is clearly marked, um, to ranging to pedestrians, uh, uh, signal heads. For example, we got, we received a grant recently where it has countdowns that actually tell people how fa, how quickly they need to cross the streets. There's medians or pedestrian refuges in the middle of the road to shorten the crossings if the road is long, that someone can, if they can't make it across in time. Uh, there is, sometimes you, you change the curb line, widen the curb to bulb it out to help pedestrians have a shorter crossing between intersections. There is, Heath, do you want to jump in and add to the list? I know there's a long list, but I'll let you jump in.
Yeah, yeah, so thank you, Counselor Scully. So in addition to some of the comments, the city is looking at potentially implementing pedestrian leading times at our signalized intersections. So what, I, I'm sure that some of your, you council have been at intersections where, you know, when you're going to walk across, it's at the same time that the vehicles get the, the green as well. So we're starting to find that if you can give pedestrians a couple extra seconds ahead of time, then you can start, and you'll be out in the road before the other, the vehicles want to cross. And so they will yield to you and allow you to cross. So that's something that we're looking at. We're also looking, uh, for our signalized coordination that, to, to make sure that there is a pedestrian phase for all directions and kind of built into the, the coordination of that. That way, right now, a lot of the other ways that the signals were, were set up to, to run, if a, you know, we'll, we'll talk about Sheridan and like 94th, so right there by the Valero. So right now, everything was geared for Sheridan traffic, but if a pedestrian wanted to cross Sheridan, it throws everything out of coordination. So what we're doing now is building in a pedestrian phase into the coordination timing, so that, that way, when pedestrians hit it, we don't really notice a, an impact to flow on Sheridan. So what that does is it just, it gives our pedestrians the right to walk through that. And, uh, raised pedestrian crossings, I'm not sure if Christina mentioned that, but that's sometimes when we do it like a, it looks like a speed bump, but you do it 10 foot or eight foot wide at the top so that we can maintain the ADA accessibility. So thank you.
Thank you. So I have one last question. Um, as we start to think about how our city is going to evolve into the future um, with smart technology and possibly vehicles that drive themselves, and, um, those, those wonderful inventions that we're looking forward to, how are we thinking about our, our pedestrians on the roads? Because I know that that's been part of the concern with the electric vehicles, is that they don't have the ability to stop for the pedestrians, and how will that work? So how are we rethinking our roads when we're constructing them? Are we thinking ahead, or are we just really going along with what we have today?
It's interesting, I'll give a brief example. When the MAC, when that, uh, driverless autonomous vehicle was being tested out at the MAC, uh, Growing Home, if you fall, if everyone followed that, is there a little driverless vehicle they were testing to transfer food between them, and it had to go onto some of our roads. Heath and I were very much involved in that discussion because regionally, there's a lot of cities implementing driverless vehicle pilots. And we're keeping an eye on what the other cities are doing. We're part of focus groups through Dr. Cog to learn what they were doing, because we have to be ready for, when we were talking about driverless vehicles, how much we'd have to redo our roadways in some areas to accommodate that vehicle in its own facility. So that's one thing, is, is that it's a great technology, but we need to be prepared for infrastructure changes potentially, to bring those types of technology on. But I also do agree, there's a safety side to it. They are improving the technology to be more reactive to pedestrians, but those are our most vulnerable users of the, the system. And we need to make sure when we welcome something into the city that we are prepared to understand that technology, and that it's been a, um, tested enough to prove that it can stop quickly enough when there's a pedestrian in the way. So to, long story short, I believe we are just watching what other in the region and the nation cities are doing, seeing what the best practices are, kind of the same with micro-mobility. We're just watching and learning, so that we are ready, and we can, we might need to get ready to ask for some funding, because those private partners will bring in the vehicles, but they look to jurisdictions to really, um, prepare for that on their infrastructure. And some of those vehicles, like the one at Growing Home, don't travel very fast. So where do you put those in our city? So where do you put those in our city that they interact with travels if they don't have their own lane? So those are some of the realities and that's why sometimes these vendors, we just have to have a lot of conversations with them to understand how it fits within our city, not just the Denburs that are a little bit more compact. And so how does it connect to our urban centers and things like that in the city? Does that answer your question? I just want to give a little context and background where it is right now.
No, it absolutely does. You know, I know that at one point, when we're constructing our paths, I know we've been looking at making our paths go under roads or over roads because we don't want people actually crossing the roads. So I do appreciate that and I appreciate that you're looking forward and thinking about it. So thank you. That's it for my questions. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Scully. Are there any other questions or comments from my colleagues? Seeing none, Mr. Klein and Ms. Evanoff, I just want to say, I apologize, I was.
Looked like Counselor Vols was in there and then I after him.
I apologize, I was scrolled up, so I didn't see the new additions. I'm Counselor Vols.
That was okay.
Oh, we've lost your audio.
Well, thank you. Thank you for this presentation. I really appreciate it. Can you all hear me? Okay. I think there are a lot of really great quality of life improvements throughout this plan, so I commend you for your hard work and the team's hard work on this. It makes me very excited. I see the quality of life in our city rising with this plan, so thank you. I particularly liked in the pedestrian plan, the improvements and connections to trails. I think that's been a priority of mine and whenever we can do that and connect to our trails, that's such a great resource and that's what our open spaces and trails are what people think of when they think of Westminster sometimes. So I think that's wonderful. I do have a question. Do we currently have a bike rental system where you can rent bicycles in our city?
That's a great question. We did historically years ago and it was a small program that was more for recreation. So micro mobility, which is actually identified in the strategic plan, which is scooter and bicycle rentals, is something that Heath and I and others are evaluating right now. We are on the Dr. Cog Micro Mobility Working Group where we're learning how Denver and Aurora and others are implementing those types of programs. Because it's not as simple as letting the bikes come in, as we've heard from our neighboring jurisdictions, we do have to have some type of plan and administration type program to administer those. So what we are doing, and now that it's been identified in the strategic plan, it's even more important, we are learning those lessons and preparing an idea of a framework of what does it take to welcome vendors? Because vendors are not going, they're wanting to be in our city and we just need to understand the resource needs for that. And so, and it could be scooters, it could be bikes, it could be a mix. It just depends what the community wants, as well as the buy-in of elected officials and our management and staff and what we can do. I will say that it's a conversation around the US 36 corridor, so some might start appearing maybe down the road in our jurisdiction a little bit. So we have to be prepared even for other people's vehicles to show up in that. And a lot of vendors are waiting for this. They're ready to talk to us. And so again, we just need to take a step back and create a framework to understand this and be ready for it.
Well, thank you for that answer. And that's, yes, I understand that. So a couple of years ago, I attended a National League of Cities Conference and they had a whole section about scooters and ordinances and regulations around scooters. Do we already have, are we prepared for that? Because it really was quite a, when Denver took it on a few years ago, is a major, major undertaking. Do we already have that on the books or we are contemplating what happens when we do have scooters around our city? And if they're on a bike trail, if they're on one of our trails, how do we regulate them? Do we have that on the books or have we started that yet?
It's a mix.
Counselor Volz question, are you okay? Counselor Seymour needs to reboot, he is losing power. You're okay, Counselor Seymour, Nana?
It should be pretty seamless if, there we go, I'm being let in right now. Go ahead.
Transferring devices, sorry, I misunderstood and thought he needed to be paused. Go ahead, Counselor Vols.
So my question was, do we? I think, so my question was, scooters, do we have, do we have regulations on the books already to regulate scooters?
We have a mix. So we go by state rule or state law about our trails. We look to that of the different types of electric vehicles that are allowed on our trails. I don't know off the top of my head, there's a couple of different variations of those vehicles. But as for on our streets, right now, bicycles can pretty much go wherever. But we do need to probably consider, because we have side paths. That's the unique thing about Westminster compared to Denver. We have these side paths where all bicycles and pedestrians can mingle in there. So it's a little bit more challenging like on a Sheridan to say, hey, bicycles, you need to be on Sheridan instead of, you need to be on the side path. So as we look into the micro mobility, we need to evaluate which additional rules and regulations we need to have in place. We also need to have the more administrative side to manage those vendors and where they're allowed to be with those vehicles as well for the sake of parking. I did want to say just really briefly, we did ask the community initially in a survey last year their input. We only heard from about 300 people, but that was our first take of getting the temperature of this. And so we need to still have community input on this as well because it's important to hear people's interest in this as well. So hopefully that answers your question, Counselor.
Yeah, yeah, well, thank you for that answer. Yeah, I think it's kind of an ongoing, evolving process for sure. And then finally, one last question. Will you be back after this is adopted or if and when it's adopted? And I'm going to say when it's adopted, will you be back in a year to give us kind of an update to say, kind of gauge where we are, kind of a review of one year into this mobility plan, where are we? Will that happen?
Yes, that's a great question. Yes, we plan on coming back. I don't know what the increments are, but as I mentioned, we'll be developing metrics and measurements to talk about how the plan is implemented and how it moves needles. And so that'll be really important. We'll also share that with the public on maybe a website to really be clear and transparent because I always say plans shouldn't collect dust. We want to implement this. So we do want to report on the progress with you. So let's assume about a year, but we'll see where we're at with things over the next year because we're watching the pandemic. That affected transportation, good and bad. So we'll be happy to come back and report to you how the plan is coming along.
All right, good. Well, thank you very much and thanks for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Vols. Mayor Protem Demont.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the presentation. I got, this is my second go-around since you joined us at the Placidity Board. It allowed me to think of some good questions, I think. I'm curious, like as we've expanded the bicycle lanes, because I know there's been a lot of expansion, especially like Sims was one and 100th was one where, you know, there was varying degrees of opinions about it. But I'm just curious, like, do we have any actual data that shows how that's improved safety as far as, do we see actual decrease in accidents as far as bicycles versus automobiles? And, you know, do we have any data that supports or shows how those changes have impacted us?
That's a great question around safety. Safety is a little tricky to measure sometimes. It depends on accidents being reported. We can, we can look into some data to see if it's changed. Sometimes the police reports don't include some details and so it's hard to interpret if it related to a bicycle or pedestrian at times. But we work with the data that we have and we can look into that. That is related to the Vision Zero Plan that we want to implement to really measure the changes that we implement on the streets to make it safer and to measure those changes as well. And Heath, I didn't know if you wanted to add anything to that as well because I know you've worked a lot with safety data.
Yeah, so thank you, Mayor Protem. Great question. And we did collect some of the data prior to installing the bike lanes on 100th Avenue. And we will compare those against the accidents that we're seeing since those bike lane improvements have been implemented. And I will make that available to council. But right now, we don't have it just printed off. As Christina said and as we've all kind of experienced, COVID did change some of the nature of the way that bicycling and vehicular travel occurred. And so we're not sure if 2020 was the anomaly on some of the accidents or is that just still the same? So we are looking at that and those are fairly fresh improvements. So we're really going to look like the five to 10 years prior and then, you know, as we gain five years out, you know, really what's the difference? But we are checking that. Thank you.
And I wanted to ask us really quick, too. This is where community input is pretty awesome, where we hear from the bicycle advocates and the bicycle users going, I feel so much safer crossing that street. So that's one less accident that's reported. It's not exactly perfectly quantitative, but it's an exciting thing to hear as transportation practitioners when someone said, I felt safe crossing the street with my bicycle or in that bicycle lane along that street because you guys put that in. That's another good little metric that we have there, too.
Yeah, no, that's good. And on the flip of that, I'm assuming that, you know, you're getting some of the feedback from the motorists to kind of take their impact. Like I know I've seen you guys shift some, one I think about actually that I believe Counselor Scully actually was at the foresight to bring forward when we first were on council, when you did some work on 112th and Westminster Boulevard and it turned into kind of a dangerous turn there. So I imagine for motorists, too, because I'm sure they, you know, if they feel like they're, you know, inadvertently having bicyclists in front of them, I'm sure we take some of that into account as well.
Yes, we do. We definitely listen to the vehicular experience as well as the pedestrian or bicyclist experience. So yes, we want our roadways to be safe for all users. And so we do try to mend all of that sometimes, but there is always a being safer medium.
Great, great. Two final quick questions. One, you mentioned COVID. And so one of the things I know that we've seen in like commercial space and, well, just in transit in general, there's a lot more remote workers. But the other anomaly that I think we've started to hear and, you know, potentially this phases out as we distance ourselves further from COVID, although it's kind of always going to be a thing, but at least we've, you know, got vaccines and we've got ways to manage it. But are we seeing any kind of shift in the, you know, the mass transit because people are worried about getting on buses or in cabs with other folks? Is that, is there any long-term impacts that we anticipate as we look at this, you know, this holistic plan? Because people have, you know, maybe thought they don't want to be in that close proximity with people because of that impact?
Heath and I talk about this every day, about the changes. First of all, we've seen the traffic increase tremendously in the last month or so. Everyone's out and it's probably even higher than it was pre-pandemic, which is kind of shocking. I can't speak on behalf of RTV and I know Counselor Smith is a RTV employee. I know they're monitoring what their ridership is right now and slowly readjusting their transit routes because they did cut some routes and some stops. And so there is that slow rebound coming on as people are starting to use transit. Now, how the work from home and the telework things work is going to be challenging and that's why we had a little challenge creating metrics because we don't know what the new norm looks like settling down and we believe it will in the next year pending the pandemic can start to plateau and dip and things like that. So the transit side has been affected. The, you know, the buses were quite a bit empty and at one point, a lot of routes were cut. And so we hope that rebounds, but that's why jurisdictions such as ourselves and partners with RTV is to encourage people to start using those modes again to support that system as well as, like I mentioned, the Transportation Demand Management Program. Educate people that are even on the fence about using transit to learn how to use it and learn that it's available. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, no, it doesn't. I mean, I know that I'm seeing that at my company, we're in the kind of a hybrid, ongoing as long as it goes well. I think a lot of places learned that they were able to be efficient. So it'll be interesting to see how that all shakes out. My last question is around safety and you guys kind of touched on this multiple times. But what I'm really curious about is as we talk about road safety and speed and stuff, how are you guys working with the police department in this plan as far as like speed and streets? I would say one of the probably top complaints that I've got over my four years on council or even running was, you know, there's always those streets where people go too fast in the neighborhood and people think that there should be speed bumps or they're, you know, there should be signs. And I know a lot of times the police department's involved in mitigating some of those speed issues when we have, you know, multiple complaints. So how do you guys work that into the plan and how are they working with you guys?
Sure. I'll answer it at a little bit of a high level and then I'll let Heath talk more on the engineering and speed mitigation side that he does. One of the actions I had mentioned briefly is we're going to develop a Vision Zero Plan. A lot of cities have these and that's reducing fatalities and serious injuries along our roadways. The police and fire department are going to be very key stakeholders in that because the challenge is, is we can improve the road quite a bit, but it does require education and enforcement. So that's where the partnership is going to be very key in that process. I mentioned previously that we're going to have some new policies in place such as speed mitigation and traffic calming, as well as complete streets and altogether holistically is applying those to projects going forward. So we look at that speed, that traffic lens of improving projects as well as on local roads, what little things can we do to help mitigate for those speed issues along there? And so I'm going to turn that over to Heath to talk about some of those speed mitigation tools that he's been using and just kind of summarize that if that can answer your question.
Yeah, great, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor Protem. So yes, anytime we receive any speeding kind of concerns, I will contact the PD and let them know that we've heard about this and vice versa. If they hear about it, they let us know in transportation engineering and planning that there is someone or some observed speeding going on in a neighborhood and we'll evaluate it. So oftentimes what happens is if we receive a complaint about speeding, we do a speed study and that can be sometime range from a 24-hour count to six full days of both volume and speeds in both directions or in both directions on multiple lanes. From there, we analyze it. So a lot of times.
Klein, can you pause? Okay, I just wanted, we lost Counselor Vols for a moment. I wanted to make sure he was back. And it also appears we might have lost Counselor Seymour. Counselor Seymour, are you there?
Yeah, I can see and hear.
Okay, you're just a black box for us. Okay, sorry, Mr. Klein, just wanted to make sure everyone on council was getting the same information.
Absolutely. So, you know, a lot of times we'll get complaints about speeding on a collector or a local roadway. And oftentimes if it's posted 25 miles an hour, you know, we will go out there and do that speed study. So we kind of right now have been operating on a policy that if the observed speeds of the 85th percentile, so you'll hear traffic professionals refer to this 85th percentile, which is of the recorded number of travelers, 85% travels at that speed or below. And so if we have an 85th percentile speed recorded that is 20% above the posted speed limit, then that's when we start to really look at, can we implement additional striping? Can we implement additional signage? Sometimes we do those speed awareness signs because 20% at 25 miles an hour is right at 31, 32 miles per hour. So for PD, that's right in that area where it's, they can enforce, but it's kind of difficult to enforce at that low speeds there. We all want to enforce it when it's obvious, if you're 10 miles an hour or above, but it gets kind of a gray area when it gets a little bit close to the posted speed limit. So that's where we've seen a lot of vehicles travel at, start to travel at the speed limit when you see that, you know, the actual, you're going this fast. So those are tools that we do. But to really answer your first question, transportation engineering and PD, we coordinate a lot. And so if we notice that the speed awareness signs do not work or there's some sort of glaring kind of error, or we're seeing speeds that are in excess of that 20%, then we want to start to look at other ways to kind of roundabout at an intersection, will that work? Or as we mentioned earlier, a raised pedestrian crossing or the bulbous, which is kind of at an intersection narrowing it so the pedestrians cross less, but that narrowing makes it a little more uncomfortable for vehicles. So it really depends on the speed study, what we're seeing, and then we need to evaluate that. So it all informs on itself, but there's a lot of coordination between transportation engineering and PD.
Great. Thank you for your guys' answers and your work. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, can I add? I just found the information for Counselor Scully. One question answered, one less email, so the mode share for it. This was based on the five-year estimated average between 2013 and 2017, so not quite current, but it's the best we have, it's the census data. The bicycle percentage of commutes, resident commute work trips is, I'm looking at my color coding here, 4.3%. And we are at almost 80% single occupancy vehicle. Now, we are suburban. Now, we are suburban communities, so we tend to see historically throughout other communities similar. That's kind of about the pie wedges right there. So, so hopefully that answers your question, it's a percentage, but I just wanted to address that right now. I was able to find the data. Thank you for letting me interrupt.
Oh, no, thank you. Appreciate you researching that question from Counselor Scully. Counselor Scully, do you have a follow-up question or you can? Okay. Thank you so much for this presentation. Enjoyed reading through the report, but definitely do want to still become more familiar with it. When I was new on council, I had the benefit of going to a Strong Towns presentation at the National League of Cities. And that opened my eyes to how impactful transportation and mobility planning is on almost every facet of living in a community, whether it's safety, access, livability, even economic vibrancy, how we plan our streets has an impact on everyone's daily lives. So I'm heartened to see this comprehensive plan that takes into account, you know, safety, complete streets, how we want to grow and anticipating in a very organized way, the different approaches that we will take. I have to compliment you on your iterative community engagement and making that foundational to this plan. Obviously, I just think that you get more buy-in when you're talking to stakeholders, whether those are the motorists, the bicycle community, understanding their both concerns and aspirations for our, our mobility network. So thank you for how intentional this is. I am shocked Counselor Volz did not bring this up, but I also was happy to see that we were going to be leveraging our boards and commissions to, to see how they respond to this. And I apologize if I missed it, but is the Environmental Advisory Board going to be included as one of the boards and commissions that you touch base with?
Yes, it is. Yeah, if you'd like me a list, I'm going to Planning Commission tomorrow night. I've already been to the inclusivity board, as Mayor Protem mentioned. I'm going to the Environmental Advisory Board, the Parks, Recreation and Open Space Board Commission, sorry, I'm still learning them. I think those are the ones that we are going to, I believe. Yes, those are the ones.
That sounds great. So just really appreciate how thoughtful that was. And then finally, I wanted to say, I, I like that you talked about the next step being prioritization of implementation. I think our community does get somewhat fatigued when we do these planning processes and they sit on a shelf. But making sure that this is a living document that, that is measured and we measure our success on it is important to keep that confidence in our community, that there is an end product and a goal with these. So again, wonderful presentation tonight. Thank you for the document. In the past, when we have approved things like the comprehensive plan or the budget, council often receives a hard copy. Will that be the case, do we know with this, so that we can even more familiarize ourselves with it and be an asset when talking to community members? Are you guys planning on that?
I'll be honest, we weren't, but I can see what we can do. It's a little tricky to print this because of the amount of color we've used.
So. Yeah, never mind if it's digital, you know, I like the, the low environmental impact of the way we have it, but it is harder to flip.
Yeah, that could be a reason. But if you do need a copy, please reach out to me. I'm happy to provide a copy. So if specific counselor would like a copy, please do. You'll just have to give me a little time to figure out how to print it just really quick in our print shop, but I'm happy to accommodate those copies for you. So if anyone just would like to let me know either tonight or another time, please let me know.
Thank, thank you. Just, it's easier to, with the appendix to flip back and forth, so.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, we will, we'll talk this over after this meeting and we'll, we'll get a hard copy to each counselor.
Oh, well, I'm not, I'm definitely not directing that. It was more curiosity. I can get used to the digital, make sure that.
Yeah, but I think we all kind of like it. I still even here, working from home, I have the Bicycle Master Plan right at my desk. So there is nice to have that tangible there to look at. So we will discuss this and more than likely, we'll be sending you guys a copy. Thank you.
Well, thank you and well done to both of you. Seeing no further questions, this was the last item on our agenda. There was an information-only item, but I don't believe we have any presentations on that. So if seeing nothing else, I will adjourn the meeting at 10:08. Thank you all for joining us tonight.